Mary Gillis, would you please update the website? I put it on the emergency banner, the new Zoom link. But if you'd be so kind to update it on the agenda, that would be great. Thank you. Okay, we are unmuted, so these mics are live. Alan, can you hear us okay?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Is that right there? Just wait a second, oh, I see what I got. That's the right number to ring. Four, oh, so there's more to it, four.
Zero, four, five.
Dang it.
Thanks, everybody, for spreading the word. A new login number for Zoom, 842-0435-4045.
Tried to sign in, they couldn't.
Yeah, we're having technical difficulties.
Apparently. Anyway, that's why I'm here, because I was going to be at home.
That was a quick adjustment, I'm impressed.
I nearly had an accident on the way.
Oh, good, thanks.
Yeah, I did.
Does this sound like the public is sort of finding their way here?
I think so. Yeah.
Like thirty-eight.
Yeah. Oh, here, well, I'm promoting.
So that's okay, you don't have to be a panelist, I'm here.
I know, I wasn't even sure.
Recording in progress.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Scioto Township Board of Trustees to order at twenty minutes past seven. Those who are participating in person may reply to the roll by saying here. Those who are participating remotely, please indicate the municipality from which you are participating. Please call the roll.
Hathaway.
Present.
Palmer.
Here.
Flintoff, here. Corto.
President, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Jerome.
President, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Noel.
Here, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Vogel.
President, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
All present.
That brings us to adoption of the agenda. And actually, before, before we get into the adoption of the agenda, I want to take a moment to welcome our new township administrator, David Rowley, has joined us starting this month and is already immersed in the work of Scioto Township. And we're very glad to have you here, David. David is, as many of you know, very experienced in township policy as educator for the MSU Extension Service Program on municipal government. And before that, had a long career as assessor for the city of Mount Pleasant and for other municipalities. So we're the beneficiaries of a long career and we're very glad to have you here as our new in-house expert. And hopefully, we'll all be educated as a result. So welcome and welcome to your first meeting as our township administrator.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
And I know when we get to reports, there will be an opportunity for you to make a presentation and sort of tell us what you've seen so far in terms of Scioto Township. In terms of the adoption of the agenda, there's a couple of items that I would like to add to the agenda. One of them is an item that has been a subject of some controversy, some dispute. And I had tried to keep it off the agenda in large part to keep the meeting from going long. But I think that actually, it's probably counterproductive at this point to try and do that. So rather than delve into all of the issues of that particular item, I would like to add to the agenda the item that is found in the clerk's report. This is the budget amendments. So that would be added, I believe, probably a place to add it would be in new business as item, I guess, I four. And additionally, I would like to add an item to the agenda under approval of minutes. This is a little strange location for it, but it travels with that particular section of the agenda. And that would be item J four. And that would be an item having to do with transcriptions of meetings. And we'll explain that more when we get further into the agenda. Are there any other changes suggested for the agenda?
I have. Thank you for adding the routine budget amendments to the agenda, Will. I do have some items I'd like to request come off of consent. Would you like those now or later?
Well, I was hoping to keep everything on the consent agenda, but please, what, what items did you want to remove from the consent agenda?
Sure, I'd like to pull G one, payment of the bills, and place it, if you would, after the routine budget amendments.
So item I five?
Sure, we could just put G one after I five, if we could keep the same letters and numbers.
I see.
It helps with the tracking.
Okay.
Item G eight, land preservation, mudland property purchase. This is an exciting, big, $300,000 acquisition of land we've never talked about in public. And so I think it warrants opportunity for, for public comment if desired. And G nine, there's a technicality we need to correct in the model motion before it's approved. And we can do that by taking it off the consent agenda.
All right, so we would put G eight and G nine under new business as, oh, after G one, I guess.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, are there any other changes to the agenda? Trustee Noel, I see your hand raised.
This may just be a question to our township attorney. Do we need to respond or address in any way Jane's letter from today?
At some point, the board will need to accept trustee Vogel's resignation before it becomes effective, but it doesn't have to be today, especially given that she has set a date in the future for her last day.
Okay.
In that case, I move that we approve the agenda as amended. Trustee Vogel.
I want to honor a board colleague's request that we make an effort to keep this meeting from going to ten, eleven, twelve, one in the morning. We had tried to move it forward to ease the late night hours, but it wasn't possible, given the window of public information, public notification. I, I'll support these budget, these amendment change, or agenda changes, except the budget one. Nothing that I see in the board deck has left me with confidence that there is sufficient information about the baseline budget or even these amendments. There is not time urgency. I would really encourage us to deal, it will be, it will be so much time, whether the clerk puts it in her report or whether we make it an agenda item. I would really encourage us to ask the new administrator to attend to these budget issues and bring back a coherent, holistic, complete discussion of the budget. All right, we do need to honor our colleague's request. I hope we can, we can respect that.
I appreciate that. I think that's an important goal for all of us to try and keep the meeting from running late. I, there's a motion that was made, I'm seeking a support for that motion.
Support.
So we have motion by Hathaway, support by Flintoff. And is there further discussion or can we call the roll? Seeing none, I call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
No.
Motion passes six to one.
Communications to the Board of Trustees.
All are noted in your packet, you've received them before. In particular, I just want to note for the board, the Washtenaw Association for Community Advocacy's letter regarding ongoing remote meeting access.
Will, could I mention something, please? Since you mentioned a letter, or someone mentioned a letter, I guess Kathy. Yes, I have sent a letter to the board. It is regarding a decision I have made regarding my engagement with the board. That was sent this morning. It has not been forwarded or included in public correspondence. It probably missed a timeline for doing that. But I do want to acknowledge, since it's been mentioned, that yes, it will be in the next board deck for public disclosure.
Thank you. That brings us to public comment. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Later throughout the meeting, the supervisor will ask for public comment on each item on this agenda for possible action. I ask that you raise your Zoom hand to be recognized. Board of Trustees members may use either their Zoom hand or raise their actual hand as applies. The latter is usually easier to be seen. Trustee Jerome has agreed to serve as the timekeeper. He will announce when there is thirty seconds remaining and then time up. Out of fairness, please stop speaking when your time is up. I would ask that no one be interrupted during his or her comments. Members of the public will each be given one opportunity to address the Board of Trustees on any one issue. Public comments are not an opportunity for back and forth dialogue. However, at their conclusion, a member of the Board of Trustees may ask for recognition from the moderator to respond to a question of fact. Although we cannot help but have some repetition, please try to avoid reiterating the same points which were made by the previous speakers. And please do not involve personalities, be as factual as possible. To the trustees, I would add the reminder that we too should avoid personalizing our comments or ascribing motives to others. We are responsible for listening respectfully. That means our facial expressions and body language should not communicate either agreement or disagreement with what other speakers are saying. Neither should we make sounds or speak to show support or opposition to others' comments. And when we are in roll call for votes, it is time to say either yes or no. Are there any members of the public present in the meeting hall in person who would like to speak? Please come up to the table.
My name is Martha Mayo. I live in Scioto Township, Washtenaw County. And I have public issues. First of all, I was talking to the planning commission about the fact that I did not see in, and unfortunately, this was lately, too late to make changes, in the new master plan. I did not see a sub-chapter which dealt with the issue of health, safety, and welfare of the residents. And I thought that was missing, particularly in view of the fact that we have the plume heading towards the central part of the township. And I thought there ought to be an issue on that. However, I have rereading the master plan and particularly in looking into the whole issue of sustainability, I see that many of the issues that I would like to see under a subcategory of health, safety, and welfare are being addressed in the sustainability project. And I think that the planning commission is undertaking a really wonderful project. And I want to say that I am very proud of the Board of Trustees that they have allowed or suggested or supported the planning commission in this sustainability project. I think it will be to the benefit of the residents. Second, I want to talk about an issue which is under unfinished business, possible action, records retention policy for video recording of Board of Trustees meeting. I would urge with great emphasis that this is a worthwhile policy for the township and that the township should take quick steps to make a policy so that the video recordings of the meetings are kept. Until in, particularly in view of the fact that we have some people in the township who have taken their concerns about the minutes of the meetings to the Attorney General. And I think that smells to me like lawsuit in the future. And I think that we would be remiss if we did not have records of these meetings to be able to talk about what has been actually happened. Because it's very likely that there will be.
Three seconds.
Okay, that's basically what I wanted to say. Please retain those to deals.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present in the meeting hall who would like to make a public comment at this time? In that case, are there people participating remotely who would like to come?
If so, please raise your Zoom hand. Okay, first up is Kathleen Brandt, followed by David Reed. Kathleen?
Hi, Kathleen Brandt, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan. I also would like to talk about the board's, via motions, but they don't think about the consequence of that, these efforts to staff. So I would please ask if you approve a.
Kathleen, you're, you're breaking up.
Sorry?
It's tough to hear you there. Can you try again?
Yes, I will. So regarding the video retention policy, I want to point out and ask the board to take into consideration the level of effort to do that, because oftentimes, you vote on things and do not recognize there's additional effort required to enact or engage in these policies. So please consider the amount of effort if you do approve this and someone on staff will be engaged in doing that task. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next up is David Reed. David?
David Reed, Scioto Township. I too want to talk about item H two, the IT, or the retention policy. I'm a little bothered that there's no proposal from our IT group as to what this is going to cost. In fact, the fiscal impact is stated as none. And now, I know storage space is cheap, but it's not free. And you're talking about five years worth of video recording of the board meetings. We're talking possibly petabytes worth of data. And that all has to be backed up and it has to be, and at some point in time, who knows? It might even have to be modified in format when the format we recorded in goes away. So I think to have fiscal impact, none, is improper. And I think we need a proposal from our IT department to tell us what it's going to cost, how much extra space and how much extra time to the backups it's going to take. Each backup is going to get longer and longer, and that's going to cost us. So I think, I think that's, it's important, and I think we need that proposal. And I also wonder, are we thinking ahead? Are we thinking that we might add PC and LPC, ZBA, DDA, LASSA, PARCS, TAP? We're going to start including those minutes as well, or, excuse me, meeting videos? Maybe not this year, but maybe next year. So I think we need to plan ahead and think about that. I also, I, I should have started with this. I want to thank the manager, our new township manager, for bringing a touch of class to the meeting. Your suit and tie is very welcome there, David, thank you. And then one thing more, item I two, the solar array for the fire department. I hope you folks are, this board is a little more successful than a previous board. When the, when the township hall was being remodeled, I tried to get us to, or tried to get the board to put solar panels on top of that big flat roof we have. And nobody on the board thought it was important. In fact, it was quite, it was just poo-pooed, and it wasn't important. So I hope you guys take a look at this and, and start to harvest some of the gigawatts of solar power that are being wasted every day. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up is Rob Pattinson. Rob?
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township. It's now seven forty-two, and the banner, the orange banner that goes across the top of the Scioto Township homepage is still not available. And the agenda and the agenda packets have still not updated with the new numbers. So I think you might have some issue with the last minute change of the Zoom ID for the meeting in terms of, there are people who are still trying to get in who can't because they're not on the email list of, of a small group of us who were able to get the number from Mary Gillis. So just want to let you know it's forty-two minutes into the meeting and you still don't have public access. Thank you.
That's all the public comment.
That's all the public comment?
May I just say something about the access?
Sure.
I just want to say, Mary Gillis, our deputy clerk, is on here. And I know she's working hard on updating the website for us. And we do have forty-three members of the public in attendance, which bodes well. And I do thank everybody for your flexibility.
All right, well, that brings us to reports. And the first report is from the land preservation, it's on the Land Preservation Commission by Protect Cell Policy. And we have with us this evening Barry Lannick, who is here to make that presentation.
We didn't expect to be here tonight, but.
You couldn't log in?
I could not log in, so I drove.
Oh, well, I'm glad you got here safely.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to provide you with an update on the RENS project as it pertains to a couple of items that are on the agenda this evening, including the by Protect Cell policy that the Land Preservation Commission has recommended to you. So first, let me say that the purchase agreements for the conservation easement on the RENS property, as well as the fee simple interest after the easement, has been today. Were of course signed in October. There was a first amendment forty-five days ago to extend the inspection period for our due diligence to tomorrow. So that's just about to expire. We have a second amendment to those two purchase agreements that has been drafted and the parties have agreed to it. And that will be signed by Mr. Hathaway of the Department of Township tomorrow, as well as by the personal representative of the RENS estate. That second amendment will extend the closing deadline to April thirtieth of 2022, as well as to revise the number of acres that are being covered by those two purchase agreements. Originally, it was the entire one hundred and ten acres. Now we're reducing that to one hundred and one by virtue of the township's purchase of the northern part of. part of the property for future public services, as well as the dollars that are involved with those two purchase agreements. We now have the appraisal in hand for the conservation easement, and we had overestimated a little bit on that. So with the figure in hand, we're going to revise that purchase agreement, and then also the after-easement fee simple purchase agreement as well. I'm also happy to report to you that all of the funds for the conservation easement purchase have now been committed as of last Monday, when the Ann Arbor City Council approved the Green Belt Funds. So we now have funds from four different outside funding sources. That's a federal grant program, State of Michigan program, Washtenaw County, and the Green Belt program. And so we now know what the final amount is that Scioto Township will have to contribute toward that easement purchase. And that is right about $510,000 out of a almost $3 million conservation easement purchase price. And Scioto's share will be about 17% of that $3 million, which is really quite extraordinary. We have tremendous funding support for this project, and everybody's very excited about it. And for both the federal and state programs, it was the top-scoring property this year, so we're very pleased about that. One of the things on your agenda is the assignment of the feasible purchase agreement for after the easement. We're working with a national group called the American Farmland Trust. This is item, it was item G10 on your agenda, then they have changed, can you change the agenda around some?
No, it stays G10.
Good. Brilliant. Scioto Township cannot be the feasible owner of the property after the easement has been conveyed. We entered into that purchase agreement with the estate because they demanded that. But we, through our council, Mr. Fazio, was able to identify a means of assigning that to a different party. Initially, that's going to be the American Farmland Trust, we think. In addition to having that as our backup, we are also seeking to have a buyer so we can either minimize AFT's ownership of the property, or potentially even have that buyer in place by the time that we move toward that April 30th closing date. And that's where we get to the Buy, Protect, Sell documents. But I want to make sure before we move to that, that there's any questions from the board about what I've stated so far in terms of the update of the RENS property?
I see a hand raised. Trustee Corteau.
Not a question, just a comment, that this has been an enormously long and complicated process, and I just want to thank and compliment our consultant, Mr. Lannick, for his unrelenting and dedicated efforts on putting all these pieces together. There have been lots of twists in this road, and I'm thrilled that we've gotten this far, and kudos to you, Mr. Lannick. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Trustee Noel, I know that you had some issues, or not issues, but you wanted to make sure, I want to make sure that you have any information that you need in terms of these purchases.
I'm okay with everything.
Okay. All right. I see trustee Jerome's hand raised.
I'd just like to make a sort of a statement in regards to the fact that the nature of land transactions has changed significantly in the last number of years. The traditional format of an individual seeking a conservation easement and retaining ownership of the property is far less, happens far less now than ever. And we're seeing a lot of efforts, which are people that would like to sell their property with the intent of conserving it, but they don't want to retain ownership. And so this Buy, Protect, Sell that we're going to be exploring this evening is a way to address that. And I do also want to second Jaclyn's comments, is this, we are on the cutting edge of this. We did this with the property at the corner of Scioto and Z, and we're trying to make that a more robust process for the next opportunity being the RENS. And it is very complicated, and I would like to second my thanks to, not only to Mr. Lannick, but to all the LPC members, as we have worked very hard on this for both administrations of, actually, this has lasted quite a while. And so I just want to acknowledge that fact and update people in terms of what's happening in the township and what opportunities are coming to us.
Thank you. If there aren't any other questions from, or comments from members of the board, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just briefly, I want to thank everybody for your work on this. I think this is a great idea, this policy. I'm super excited about it. I'm wondering, what is the, I'm not clear, what is the status of the Buy, Protect, Sell policies? Is it something that the LPC expects to bring to the board, or is this the working policy?
Wasn't that the next, you're going to do the presentation?
Okay, okay.
And I was just going to make a comment too.
Excuse me, sorry.
That's all right. I was just going to make a comment that in the packet, there are what are, what should be labeled draft documents for the policy and the related materials, but they, we neglected to sort of mark them that way, but these are still subject to approval. They're not, they're not final. So please, give the presentation.
Absolutely correct, Will. So this has been in the works for, excuse me, quite some time now. Trustee Corteau and I have taken the lead on this. This is, as Mr. Jerome said, on the cutting edge of land preservation projects. As he said, we've already done one of these, even though we didn't have a term for it at that time. We now know that these are called Buy, Protect, Sell projects. But a second one has come up here in terms of the RENS property, and we've got two other applications in hand right now where landowners want to do something very similar. And so we determined that this was the time to create a policy and other documents in support of that, to present it to the Board of Trustees. So the three documents that are in your packet tonight have all been reviewed by the Land Preservation Commission and recommended for the board's consideration. So this is not a current policy. It won't be until the Board of Trustees endorses that. We're looking at it tonight as an initial presentation for you. And in talking with Will earlier, we thought that the board would want to stew on this a bit, and that we can come back in January, hopefully the first January meeting, and hopefully have that finalized at that time. And the main interest in that is that in addition to the policy statement, the second document that you have is a request for proposals specific to the RENS property, but a format that we would propose be used going forward for these other projects that are just a couple of steps behind the RENS project at this point. And, but in terms of the RENS project, again, with that April 30th deadline for closing both the easement and the feasible purchase of the property after the easement's in place, if we could identify a buyer for that before then, such that American Farmland Trust's involvement would not be necessary, that would be an ideal situation. That may be a little too aggressive for this first time through, but the sooner that we send the RFP out and start receiving proposals, the better. And so if we can get an approval at the first January meeting, send that RFP out January 15th, I'm thinking a 60-day window for responses that takes us to the middle of March, maybe we would make that April through the deadline. And if not, something shortly thereafter. So the first piece that you have in front of you is a policy document. It gives some background on the kinds of projects that we have been engaged in so far, which is basically, in some instances, we have bought land and are managing those and developing those as natural areas with parking areas and trail networks and signage and so forth. We've also contributed funds toward the purchase of land by other agencies, particularly Washtenaw County Parks, in terms of the sound woods preserve, and, what's the other one? A couple of them. So we've done a few of those kinds of projects. We've got a larger number of conservation easement projects where we're just buying the development rights on a property, and the property remains in private ownership, and the owners are satisfied with that. But as Mr. Grove said, we are running into a situation where we have landowners who say, "I want to conserve my property. I don't want to sell conservation easement. I want you to buy the property and then find a new buyer for it." And we've, in working with American Farmland Trust and some other entities around the country, found that these are called Buy, Protect, Sell projects. They've been done in other places around the country, but not very often. It is cutting edge, and for a relatively small municipality like Scioto, to be engaging in this is really to be commended. But these are where the opportunities are. I mean, the RENS property comes around once in a lifetime. The same thing with the April farm that we were able to conserve there as well. And that'll be true for other properties here in the township. And if this is the way that we need to do to get to it, then that's how we're going to have to do it. So we wanted to have a policy statement to say this is what it is that we're doing, why we're doing it, and some basic information about the process that will be undertaken in these kinds of projects. So that's the first piece of it. And then the second piece of it, as I said, is the request for proposals specific to the RENS property, identifying the property and what its features are. And I would have had these things in front of me if I'd been sitting at my home computer, so I'm going a little bit by memory here. But, sure, if you got one.
That'd be helpful.
Thanks, man. So the RFP identifies the property, the description, what the timeline is for that, what a conservation easement is, what the targeted purchase price is for this property. So I mentioned that we were under current, two current purchase agreements for the easement and the after-easement fee with the estate. That totals $3.5 million. The easement value is just shy of $3 million. The nine and a half acres that the township's going to purchase for public services on the north side of the property was identified in the appraisal that we had done for the conservation easement, of having a value of $225,000. And so $3.5 million minus $299.5 minus $225 is $280,000. And that will be the purchase price for the 101 acres of the RENS farm after the easement has been conveyed on it. So we cite that value there, the kinds of requirements that a prospective purchaser of the property needs to have, statement of farming experience, a business plan, references. And also, we're suggesting that we put a priority on proposals where they're going to be producing food that can be directly consumed, you know, fruits and vegetables and nuts and that nature. That's not to say that we wouldn't consider an application from a, if you will, a conventional farmer. The land is currently planted in hay, and that's a viable crop also. And so that could continue going on. And then suggesting initial deadline of February 26th, but given the board's consideration of the policy statement and the RFP, we'll push that back some with the result date that I put into it. And then a bunch of supporting documents that we can make available to anybody who's interested in applying for that, to buy the property. And the third piece is our proposed means of evaluating those proposals that are received, the minimum requirements, and then other things that they can provide to us. One of our LPC members, Lisa Papas, works at the University of Michigan and does these kinds of, for grant purposes, these kinds of evaluations with spreadsheets and so forth. So she'll be a very valuable resource to me to get this kind of evaluation process off the ground. So that is the quick and dirty on the three documents that we have provided to you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you have now, and then again, we'll be dealing with this at the first January meeting as well.
Are there questions from members of the board? I see a hand raised. Trustee Corteau.
Thank you. So one comment and one question. The comment is that this policy was developed in working with and hearing concerns of our conservation partners, both at the county, Agriculture Lands Preservation, ALPAC, I'm sorry, Barry, what does that?
Advisory.
Advisory, thank you. And also the city. And so we certainly are trying to develop a policy that's clear and open and that all of our partners can embrace and support. And their requests were to have a very open, clear, transparent process with the bid process that would be in keeping with other RFPs, and publicized widely to the largest possible network. And so all of those concerns have been addressed in this policy. My question is, Mr. Lannick, I wonder if you could explain a little bit more about how that sale price, the after-easement value sale price was reached, and does that incorporate, as we've reserved in the policy, the ability to do a small fee to cover administrative costs? And also, does that include setting aside money for future monitoring? I wonder if you can help the board understand that pricing a little bit more?
Yes. So that's two things, right? It's the price overall and then the future monitoring costs. Yeah. So we have an appraisal of the property for the conservation easement that we just obtained about a month ago. The total value of the property as it is now, unencumbered, was cited as $3,774,000. And then the conservation easement portion of that was valued at $2,995,000. So the difference is, and then there was the valuation of the nine and a half acres the township's going to buy for the public services at $225,000. So the actual value of the land, the 101 acres, after the easement's in place, is actually a bit greater than $280,000. But we're under contract with the estate for a total of $3.5 billion. So they're giving us a little bit of a discount in purchasing this property from them. The easement value is fixed. That's what all of our funding partners rely on. That's what they've all contributed to. And so between the state, federal, county, city, and township, we're going to cover the $2,995,000 for the easement purchase. Township's going to pay the $225,000 for the nine and a half acres on the north side. And so the remainder, under $3.5 million, is $280,000. Does that make sense? Is that good? So it's a good deal, to be honest. You know, for 100 acres and basically $3,000 bucks an acre is probably a little bit below the current agricultural value of land that's, has conservation easement on it. That's about $3,500 bucks an acre these days. So this is an opportunity for, you know, potentially a young farmer to get involved in a property at a relatively low rate. We do have in the policy statement the ability for the township to charge up to 10% of the purchase price as an administrative fee for doing all of the evaluation of the proposals that come in, which could be a substantial undertaking. This is our first time through it, so we really don't know just yet. And so the initial cost could be $28,000 on top of that. So it might be a $300,000 purchase, or something along those lines, but still very affordable. The LPC, many years ago, passed a policy that stated that for every conservation easement that the township holds, and there are 17 of them, I think, at this point, and we'll be adding more on as the years go by, that we would set aside a minimum of $10,000 per easement as a future funding source for legal defense, should we ever need to get into that, and obviously we have in one other case. And also as a means to ensure that there's a fund to tap into for conservation easement monitoring costs, which are fairly minimal, as long as you don't have a violation. And- monitoring costs, which are fairly minimal, as long as you don't have a violation. And so that's just something we have in mind. So, you know, there'll be probably 200 to 300,000 out of millage proceeds that will be set aside when the program is concluded to ensure that we have that funding source available, you know, in perpetuity.
Great.
Did I hear everything? Thank you.
Actually, I think you made probably better eye contact with her looking up at the...
Oh, yes. I can see her.
And I see another hand up, trustee Jerome.
To be brief, I just want to reiterate the cooperative development of the buy protect sell policy and why we did it. You know, we've met with local partners many times over the years, but in some of the instances, they had voiced some concerns, and they're looking at it for us to lead this effort. So we absolutely sat down with them to recognize some of the concerns that they had. And quite honestly, the reason we do that is, one, we're good partners. Two, we want to be good partners, we want them to be good partners, and it allows us to do what we just did for Rens, which is maximize the participation of additional individuals, not individuals, I should say entities, that help participate in the purchase of this and keep our prices down while encouraging everyone to take a fair share. Now, granted, Rens incurred or had the participation of both state and federal levels, but I just want to reinforce how hard the LPC has worked to craft this buy protect sell policy to address the concerns of other local partners so that we can continue to maximize the funding opportunities to purchase these properties and keep them, quite frankly, in a state of protected, conserved, and not developed.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments from members of the Board of Trustees?
Good job.
Yes, thank you very much. And so the buy protect sell policy, then we'll, the members of the board, members of the public should expect to see that on the agenda for the first meeting in January, which I believe is January 11th.
Yes.
Okay. And there are some additional items related to the LPC on both consent agenda and now on new business. So we'll, you're welcome to stay for those, or now that you have access, you can go home and access from home.
So the link is working now?
The link is working now, I believe. And it's up on the township website?
And an orange banner across the top.
So hopefully, yes.
It'd be my preference to head home and have it available.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. See, I had to, hey, sorry, town administrator, please.
Just one quick question, if I may. The buy sell, or buy protect sell document that was in the materials, is that the formal policy that the board would be looking at? Or is there some amendment to it that would come in January for final action, or is this it?
This is the proposed policy recommended by the Land Preservation Commission.
Okay, fair enough.
The board, you know, can either adopt it as is, there can be some amendments to it.
Right. So this is the recommended policy as it stands?
Yep, as well as the RFP, specific again to the Rens property, but that's the format that we're proposing to use going forward and the criteria for evaluating proposals.
That's what I did. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lannick. The next presentation is by our township assessor, Warsha Kalkarni. It's about assessing.
So there's been a lot of information about assessing on the township website already, but for the one person maybe that didn't get it, I'm just going to give you, you never know, never know. Just going to give you a little bit of background. The assessing department is driven by statute. There's a timeframe and a time limit, and we have to follow and meet that deadline. So I'm going to give you a little bit of background and tell you what we're doing right now because there's a deadline that we have to meet. On March 15, 1994, Michigan voters approved the constitutional amendment known as Proposal A. Proposal A established the taxable value as the basis for calculation of property taxes. Increases in taxable value after adjustments for additions and losses are limited to the rate of inflation or 5%, whichever is less. However, when the property transfers ownership, the previous owner's taxable value is null and void, and the new owner's taxable value is a state equalized value. This happens the year after the sale. And I highly encourage everybody to please call me. I will give you estimates. I don't like to see people come to the counter and cry when they find that number because your real estate agent will not tell you. So for 2022, the Consumer Price Index, or the CPI or inflation rate, is 3.3%. Your property taxes are calculated by taking the taxable value times the millage rate divided by 1,000. The function of the assessing department is to prepare the annual assessment rule for all real and personal property in the township. The assessor is required by state law to assess at 50% of market value all assessable property as of tax day, which is December 31st. Since assessments must be set by market value, changing real estate value in the community will be reflected in the assessments. Market value is the price at which a property would most likely sell in an open market transaction involving a buyer, a seller, both of whom desire to come to terms but are under no undue constraints to do so. Determining a property's value is one part of the assessor's job. Property's value can change for many reasons. The most frequent cause of a change in value is the change in market. To find the value of any piece of property, the assessor must first gather all pertinent information in the community, such as real estate sales, construction costs, rental incomes, operating expenses, interest rates, and any other factors available. Utilizing the information collected, the assessor can then go about finding a property's value. The most obvious reason a property's value can change is that the property itself changes. Any changes to the property that would affect its value must be reported to the assessor's office. Also, the assessor's office will be notified by the building officials of all building permits obtained by property owners. As we get the building permits, we draw the changes. All properties with permits are inspected, measured, and photographed. Currently, we have 444 permits as of December 1st. Building permits, anything new which is considered an addition added to the property is added to the assessed value and the taxable value. New construction of a new house, if not complete, is estimated and the value is added. All new and losses are determined as of December 31st. Assessments are not increased for some of these following items. Exterior painting, repairing or replacing your siding or roof, porches, steps, driveways, repainting or repairing existing masonry, new or replacing kitchen cabinets, adding or replacing gutters and downspots, and many other things. I have a full list if anybody needs it. They can give me a call. Another important job of the assessor is to assess all personal property in the township. We are required to mail out personal property statements by December 30th. To do this, we must do a personal property canvas. This involves visiting every address, firm, location, or place where assessable personal property may be found. The objective of the canvas are to gather all the relevant information necessary to prepare accurate assessments rule, to promote uniformity within classes of property and equitable assessments between the same or similar taxpayers, and to cost-effectively collect the maximum revenue allowed by law. We do this in the first week of December. And as of December 2020, there were 1,068 personal property accounts. Andrea from our department has already done the canvas, and we've sent the file over to get it printed and ready to mail. Once everything is inspected and measured, all the information is entered into the record card in BSNA software. Assessment notices are sent out mid, at the end of February, and the assessing department is driven by statute, and everything is time-sensitive. In the amendment, it is written that when things must get done, so for example, tax day is December 31st, border review is in March, July, and December. The principal residence exemption filing deadline is June 1st and November 1st. Those dates and times are non-negotiable. They have to be done at that time. So today, we had our December border review. So the important thing for everybody to remember is December 31st. I highly encourage, if you think that our records or your taxes are too high, please come in, take a look at the records. If there's something, a discrepancy will come out, we'll inspect, we'll make changes. It's best to do it as soon as possible before the notices go out and the database is frozen. So some of the common questions that we get are, why are my taxes higher than my neighbors? Well, most often, the comparison to your neighbor's property is the physical characteristics, your amenities, the age of the properties, but also that owner, the neighbor, might have been there for 20 years and you just purchased the property. So that's also a big difference. Why is the market value by the assessor the same as, why isn't the market value by the assessor the same as the price I paid for my home? Sales price is not necessarily the same as market value. According to Michigan law, beginning December 31, 1994, the purchase price paid in a transfer of property is not the presumptive true cash value of the property transfer. The best indicator of fair market value is market activity. There could be any number of reasons why somebody paid for a property. There could be a bidding war, there could be something we don't know about the property that the person liked, and so they're willing to pay. So, I mean, it's just best that that's not, I paid this for it, so it's not what it is. I made no changes to my property, so why did my assessment or taxes go up? Well, physical changes are not the only reason for it to go up. The frequent causes of change in assessed value is the change in local market. So your taxable value will only go up the inflation rate of 5%, whichever is less. In this case, for this year, for 2022, it's going to be 3.3%. Can the information contained in the assessment record for my property be changed if I disagree with it? Yes. Please come, give me a call, we'll come out and inspect, and we'll make the corrections. How much will my taxes increase if I make repairs and renovations to my home? Most normal repairs and maintenance will not increase your assessment or your taxable value. I have a big list, I mean, I could be here for a lot longer if I sat, so please call me and I'll let you know what's on the list, what's not on the list. But if you're adding square footage, your taxable value will go up. That's basically the simple version. How is my property assessed if it is under construction? Unfinished buildings are estimated for a portion of the total value, that is, whatever's there on December 31st. There is value in the foundation or in the wood that's done in the framing or the drywall. So we take an estimate of what we think that house is going to be, and then that's what we're going to put on there. Must I disclose to the assessor the sale price of my property when the recorded deed for its purchase does not? Yes. Within 45 days of a transfer of ownership, the property transfer affidavit has to be filed with the assessor under the authority of PA 415 of 1994. If it is not filed timely, a penalty of $5 per day, maximum of $200 apply. Also, if the PTA is filed and does not report the purchase price of the real estate, the requirements of the law have not been met, and a penalty could be levied. So right now, we're in the process of going out, doing inspections on all the building permits. All that information will be entered. All the demos will be done. On December 31st, we go out and check where all the construction equipment is going to be. And hopefully, I have never missed a deadline. We will have everything done, and assessment notices will be mailed out mid-February. So I'll come back and tell you what to do once you get your notice. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Oh, trustee Noel.
Yes, I have a question. Does the value of the property that's transferred to a family member, such as a parent to a child, still remain the same?
Yes, it will not be a transfer of ownership. So the assessment and the taxable value goes up only the market rate. It won't go, the existing taxable value will not be null and void.
Okay. I know that's how it's been in the past. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, they changed that.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off, trustee Noel. I was just going to say, that's, is that what's sometimes called uncapping when...
Yes.
Yeah, okay. There was something that you made, a comment that you made in your presentation about inventory that's done, is that done of all residential properties every year?
No, because physically, we just don't have the time and the manpower to do that. The state would like us to do 20% if possible, and visit some way 20% of the township if possible, whether it's through building permits, drive-bys, however. We try to meet that. I don't know if Jim Murdy was doing that. I know he recently had Andrea and hired her mother to help drive, update all the pictures of all the properties. So I'm hoping that, you know, we'll start a cycle of the 20% starting next year.
Great. Are there other questions from other members of the board?
Just a quick question. How was your first board of review meeting here in Syo?
I was super nervous this morning, but once it started, then it was just like, same old, same old. I was back in the saddle. It was no problem.
I have a comment to pass on. Often in conversations with citizens about taxes, I encourage them to watch the SEV number on your bill, because that's what we're required to keep track of, which is reflecting from the studies, et cetera, the market value. But there have been times in the past where that was way out of whack. It was high. You need to watch that and see if you can, I think border review might be an option because if it's off the wall, as we say, and then you go to sell the house, the people buying it are going to be paying taxes on that bad number. So keep track of that, too, on your property.
Well, everybody got their tax bill. The SEV, I don't know if that's on there?
Yes.
But the taxable value's on there. Also, it tells you whether you're 100%, you have a principal residence. Please double-check that so we can fix that if it's not. And any other questions? I highly, highly encourage you to please call me first before they go to the border review, because nine out of 10 times, we can resolve it. You know? And contrary to popular belief, I am not looking to pick on people. I'm looking to just make things right. I want to be accurate.
Well, I tell people, if that ain't my way, we wouldn't have taxes. But that won't work for a lot of things.
We have to go back to that Boston Tea Party then.
Oh, no, no. Yeah.
Thank you very much, Warsha. Our next presentation is our fire chiefs' regular report. Andy?
And I will apologize for my attire.
You do not need to apologize, Andy.
Circumstances, and I'll talk a little bit later, prevent me from wearing much else.
We'll cut you slack, or slacks, as the case may be.
Fair. So here's our data from November, 137 calls, November 2021.
Just one moment, sorry, Andy.
Okay. All right, 137 calls, November 2021. Majority within Syo, as usual, 129, eight outside the community. This chart's getting a little bit busy, but this is our breakdowns of, our breakdown of runs, November being the far-right column. Eight fires, 67 medicals, various other calls. We requested mutual aid for four incidents within the community and we responded outside the community eight times for, to, to provide mutual aid to someone else. A number of significant incidents this month. A structured fire on Pear Tree Lane, November 5th. The home was a total loss. No one was injured, no one was home at the time of the fire. We determined that the fire originated in the area of the living room, but we were unable to determine a cause. This was interesting. This call came in, I think, 10:30 or so. Residents, the maintenance folks in Syo Farms had smelled smoke for, for a little while, had been driving around the community trying to find something when they eventually found this home that was on fire. First big snow day of the year, November 27th. In addition to a number of car accidents ourselves assisting Ann Arbor City by closing down I-94, we also responded to Liberty Road between Wagner and Syo Ridge for a fatal car accident. Looks like someone did lose control and unfortunately, the driver lost his life. We assisted Salem Township on a structured fire on North Territorial Road. A garage and barn with a number of various cars and such was a total loss. We assisted Chelsea on a structured fire on Steinbach Road. This one's a little closer to me. A fire started in the garage of a home and spread to the attic. We assisted Ann Arbor City on a garage fire on Dexter Avenue. On some instances, they call us initially, right when they get the alarm and, and they're, they're reciprocating stuff to us. It's reciprocal agreement. We provide them aid, they provide us aid. Their first engine got on scene and had the fire knocked down. We assisted with helping pull apart the walls to make sure the fire hadn't spread further into the garage. And our investigation team took a look at two fires this month. A building fire on Pear Tree Lane and a vehicle fire on Jackson. Total response time data from the 911 call to arrive on scene, nine minutes and 38 seconds. And our call processing time, 2:46. We are working with dispatch. Our higher priority calls are getting out much quicker. Some of these calls that are less severe, these take a little longer to, to go through their, their questioning. So that's why we're seeing a little bit of difference there, as well as our mutual aid calls are included in there. For example, North Territorial, we probably didn't get called until 10 minutes into the incident, so that's reflected in that, two minutes and 46 as well. Our alarm to arrival time, six minutes and 42, six minutes, 52 seconds on average. Our goal of six minutes, response time, we're meeting 45% of the time. Comparison year over year, last year, 2020, COVID, we were down quite a bit, as you can see from 19, this year, we're up a bit. Again, this chart, but it, it ties directly in. The second half of it's below, shows our year-to-date, year-over-year, year-to-date numbers. So as of the end of November, 2020 versus 2021, total up about 40% calls year-to-date. Training hours, 163 hours of training this month. We're working on some new methods and, and sheets to help standardize our training across the shifts. We expect to see those numbers go up. Responses per zone. Our northeast section of the, of the township, 216 calls. Our southeast section, our smallest, 431, and our west and southwest, 432 calls. There's the incident heat map. And again, like I mentioned every month, where our population centers are, where we're busiest. You see the uplands area, Parkland Plaza, Syo Farms area, all up and down Jackson and Baker and Marshall, the 94 area. And again, there's just a breakdown of the, the zones, how I categorize them. With that, if there's any questions on the report, if you have to answer them.
Are there any questions from members of the Board of Trustees? I don't see any hands raised. Thank you very much, Chief.
Couple more comments, if you don't mind. I know a lot of members of the public have been reaching out, boards reached out. But yeah, last month, I had a fire in my home. My wife and I had gone out from our neighbor's house to have dinner. My daughter just got home, she went up to her bedroom and 30 minutes later, she called and said her house was on fire. Well, she actually texted. She was on the phone with 911, had him on speakerphone while she was texting my wife and I. We got there pretty quick. I, I dare say I exceeded the speed limit a little bit, driving my residential street. I normally wouldn't. But yeah, we got there and, and my garage was on fire and the, the fire had extended to the attic by the time Celine got there. Celine Fire showed up, they got mutual aid from Mylan and Pittsfield, and everyone did a phenomenal job. Guys worked their butts off, they were, they were in there taking care of business right away. But they were, they were kind of hamstrung from the beginning, too. They're just shy of five miles from, from my house to their station. And that's something I've been talking to this board about with, with our southeast corner of the community. It's about 40% of our calls. It's a higher population density than, than I live. I, I live in a home that's on an acre lot, like many here in Syo. But in our southeast section of the township, we've got much higher population density, houses are a lot closer together. So, you know, that same fire can happen in a southeast section of our, of our community. And, you know, that, that's something I want to provide a better response to. We were very fortunate. My daughter was home, not listening, she didn't have her headphones on. And, and I had a second thing that really prevented my house from, from being totally destroyed. Most of my belongings are good. But as you exit my garage, or you go from my garage into my home, you've got your standard steel entry door, but that leads into a small hallway. Off to the right, I have a pantry, or I had a pantry. And then there's a second door that separates my living room from that hallway. And I, I kept that door closed. That got the extra four minutes for Celine to get there before my entire first floor was on fire. So, you know, those two things, I'm, I'm very fortunate. My daughter got out, she called right away. And, you know, as of yesterday, my wife and I and our kids have a condo in Celine we're staying in while they rebuild the home. So circling all the way back, as Mr. Lonik talked earlier about this nine-and-a-half acres, you know, that, that needs to be a priority for the southeast section of this community. You know, if that fire would have happened in the uplands at 2:00 in the morning, you know, I, I think there'd been a very different outcome in, in what's left of the home. I, I was very fortunate and, and I want to be able to provide a better service to residents of this community and I think that's probably our most pressing way. And with that, that concludes my report and a little, little discussion of incidents in our home. Thank you, Mark.
Very glad to have you here, Andy.
Me, too, and hopefully have a uniform soon.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chief. We're so glad you're all okay.
Thank you. That brings us to regular reports. And for the first time, our first report is from our Township Administrator.
All right. Well, first off, I would like to thank the Board of Trustees for their support and allowing me the opportunity to, to, to be the Township Administrator for, for Syo. And also just say thank you to the Township staff and the Township residents for all the, for the warm welcome that I have received. I've received many fine comments from the Board of Trustees itself, staff and residents as well. My first day was not too long ago, December 1st. And so basically, for this first report, just to give you an overview, if you look at my job description, there are ma, there are eight major categories and I've tried to accomplish something in each one of those. I'll run through this very briefly and just give you an idea of what's been transpiring. I've met with the Fire Chief and the Utilities Director for an introductory overview and planning session of, of both of those departments. I've developed an agenda and I chaired the December 7th management team meeting, began data collection into existing and current business practices here that we follow in the township and trying to determine exactly how existing workflows are going. And I've held conversations with numerous members of the staff to see exactly how those processes are currently working. There's been data gathering and preliminary review and discussions of our current budget and financial process and preliminary beginnings for a 2022 fiscal year policy proposal that will, that will come later, after we've had some good quality discussions with members of the board and also with staff. I, there is a, as you may know, there is a contract with the Firefighters Union that will be coming up. And so the Fire Chief and I have scheduled some preliminary meetings with ourselves and also with the Township Employment Attorney to begin preparation for that. I've worked, attended rather, a preliminary data gathering collection program, or I'm sorry, presentation into the GIS program from our consultant. And I've also began a preliminary review of existing pathway and utility projects that are currently on the books, that are currently pending. On the HR side, I've started to look at development of an all-staff survey as to the existing positions that we have and expected needs and started to gather job descriptions, knowledge, skills and abilities, the opportunities for cross-training and development of what our current needs are and expected needs are going into the future and starting to, to determine how some of these sessions are going to go forward with developing the teams and for that input. As I said, December 1st was my, was my first day. And so I personally have gone through the onboarding process and can tell you firsthand what works and what doesn't. And so there will be some more in-depth procedures for onboarding. And lastly, for the township meeting for this evening, I provided some additional information and opinion on various items for agenda preparation and answered lots of questions from various individuals and members of the Board of Trustees itself. And lastly, I will say, this is my 10th work, work day. So I think it's been a, a quick start and I'm very happy to, to be here. So if you have any questions, I'll be pleased to try and answer.
Are there any questions for our Township Administrator before we move on to the next report? I don't see any hands raised. The next report on the list is our, our report on Galman. Trustee Noel.
Yes, and thank you, David, and welcome. We had a card meeting a week ago. This was the quarterly meeting with Eagle. Eagle has filed a demand letter with Galman under Part 201 requesting specific data from the investigations that were done in 2016 and 2017. This has been a point of contention with card members. It's been discussed at card meetings a lot. These investigations were related primarily to soil and groundwater logs and data. So this will be helpful because most of them were done on-site at the Galman site in Syo Township. And we really don't have a significant amount of data from that area. Some monitoring wells are currently being placed consistent with what's required in the court consent judgment. Two of them are in Syo Township. One is on Dexter and Arbor Road and Honey Creek. So you might notice some activity in that area right now. It's happening right now. I had reported previously on the additional round of testing that had been done on 15 wells in the vicinity of the drinking water wells that had tested positive. This was completed in November. We recently got the results. A press release will be issued tomorrow. It was prepared by our attorney, Bill Stapleton, and homeowners have been notified. We wanted to make sure all homeowners had been notified before we released the data. Bill Stapleton, Keith Gadway, our, the engineer, Will, Jackie and I met to discuss the results. We are meeting tomorrow with the County Health Department and representatives from Eagle to collaborate, discuss and formulate a future plan. Keith Gadway has received confirmation from Pace Environmental down in Florida that they are willing to conduct additional dioxane well water testing. The procedure for this has yet to be set up. We don't have all the details worked out yet, but it will probably involve oversight with Quantum Environmental here in Syo. Keith will be involved and residents will collect their own samples. There will be storage at Syo Township. This has to be worked out yet. This detail isn't worked out. And there will be shipments of 10 samples at a time together in a cooled cooler that will be shipped down to Florida and that will be done by Quantum Environmental. Soon as this plan is finalized, we'll get the information out to residents and we will post it on the website. We're discussing having a future town hall slash informational session on the recent results from the well testing. This isn't finalized either. We're tentatively looking at January, but no details are set at this time. So I know there's a lot going on. There'll be more details tomorrow and that's it. Thank you.
And, and Trustee Noel will be bringing some kind of a proposal back to the Board of Trustees for approval before launching the, the testing program, correct?
Yes, we're going to work collaboratively on it and we will bring it back to the board.
Yeah. Just in case anyone was wondering. Thank you very much. I'll defer to the clerk next.
Okay, great, thanks. First up on elections, as you'll see, there's an item in the consent agenda related to the mailings that we need to get out yet this fiscal year related to the big redistricting lift. Every voter in Syo Township will get a letter and a new voter identification card because everybody is going to have at least one change to either a county, state, federal district and/or precinct slash polling place. So it's a big communication lift. We will bring this, any precinct changes will first be approved by the Election Commission and then the Board of Trustees will approve any changes to polling places. So those actions will be coming in short order, probably in January for both of those. The Budget and Finance Committee, we had a regular meeting scheduled for tomorrow. We have canceled the meeting for tomorrow. Please stay tuned for schedule for 2022. The update on the Woodhill Group, it continues mostly with utilities and implementing many of the changes that we've discussed regarding how permits and things are processed and, and a lot of work yet to do there. And they've spent a few hours with our finance manager and me. It's been incredibly valuable and also continue to support the Fire Chief in managing the capital project. Update on the Finance Director recruitment, continuing to develop the duties. I'll be working with David Rowley and others on fleshing out kind of the job description and how it fits with the finance manager and the other functions. We've got about 60 duties across the areas where we're looking at kind of what we do now and what we could do differently to conform more with best practices, using the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association as a guide. So we'll continue to develop this and bring something to the board whenever it's ready. And that's that.
Treasurer.
As all citizens know, you have my Christmas present. Tax bills have gone out, they are coming in, payments are coming in, in building. Payments are coming in and building, so we are going through a very busy time. We're also, at the same time, keeping track of what we are able to do and what we see as change in process and what we need to think about for the future. And that will be somewhat reflected in a future board agenda item tonight, just the kind of help we need. So things are going along. They're working out, and hopefully we get through this year, we'll have a really good system and plan in place. That's it.
Thank you. Broadband Task Force.
Yeah, if it's all right, I'm going to roll three reports into one. So the broadband task force actually meets on Thursday, so I'll have further report, further information on our next meeting. But I did want to report on the parks and recreation as well as TAP. We had a great cross-functional meeting last week and really delved down into some of the upcoming needs that we're going to be working on as a unit and as a group, and it really pointed out the need for, the reason that we have representatives from one group on another group, because it really is going to play into this. A lot of our time was spent with regards to a number of things. One, we went over grant opportunities and coordination of those grant opportunities. The discussion was led by Chris Nordstrom, but we want to make sure that we're maximizing and leveraging the opportunity for grants, but at the same time not stepping on initiatives that are unique to TAP or unique to the parks. So we want to leverage those and maximize that as much as possible, and there's different funding and different grant opportunities. So we had a great discussion regarding coordination of that. We also had the initial discussion regarding the revision of the PROS plan. So the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan is going to need to be revised for its five-year renewal. So we had just an initial discussion with regards to some of the needs. One of the things that came out of that discussion was the need for a subset or a chapter on TAP, because TAP really wasn't in its full fruition five years ago, but now it is absolutely in. All those other things. So we had to come forward as we would develop additional joint meetings to talk about the PROS plan. We also discussed budgeting. Obviously, that's always depressing here at the township and anywhere. So we discussed some of our initial budget requirements, and we're going to be working on that and presenting to both groups. And then simply, we actually just took the time to introduce one another and actually review some of the current activities and goals that each of the groups was working on. It's always great to update one another, and as I say, I think this was a great meeting that went a long way in really sort of identifying the needs and wants of both groups and being able to coordinate those to the most effective use for the township. So that's Parks and TAP. Jay might want to have a quick comment regarding task, but that, and that's broadband. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, actually, the next report is Land Preservation Commission, Trustee Corte.
I think we've covered the land preservation. Mr. Monik, his description of the Vibra Tech Cell and the Rens property, those two items have been taking a lot of our time, and the LPC will be meeting this Thursday and two days from now at 3:00 for their monthly meeting.
Thank you.
And for the Planning Commission, sorry, I'll just...
That's right, go right ahead.
The master plan was, as you know, finalized and approved in November, and the final, final signed copy is just getting out, and it should be shortly available on the website, so look for it there. The Sustainability Task Force, which has been meeting monthly under the aegis of the Planning Commission. To date, there have been three presentations from outside experts, including Thea Jaeger-Lehner, an energy analyst with the City of Ann Arbor's Office of Sustainability and Innovation, who presented the why, what, and how of their greenhouse gas inventory process with questions and discussion about how Scioto could do one ourselves. And then Harry Shehan and Evan Pratt presented on behalf of the County Water Resource Commissioner's Office and answered task force questions. Our January 6th Sustainability Task Force meeting will be at 7:00, and Barry Monik will be presenting on land preservation, along with another speaker to address local food systems. Working groups are continuing to meet and research their topic areas, and in January, the groups will work together to decide a framework for a climate action plan and start writing recommendations. And finally, we successfully recruited a master's project team from the University of Michigan School of Environment and Sustainability, together with Professor Ray DeYoung, to work with the task force on developing a community engagement, education, and outreach process for environmental sustainability and climate action. This team will be working with us starting in early 2022 and throughout 2022 and into early 23 as we develop the plan and roll it out. So we are very happy to have a group of five U of M students to work with us.
Great, that's great. Thank you. Transportation Alternative Planning Committee, Trustee Vogel.
Okay, so I just want to say to Trustee Corte, that is just great news about the CEES team. Just for the public and for the rest of the board, gosh, the two students, the two master students that supported the launch of this Sustainability Task Force were phenomenal, and to think we're going to have five students is absolutely fantastic. Okay, on TAP, again, Alec just covered it. We had this great joint session with TAP, which is pathways and so much more. But I do want to say, it's really important for the Board to keep in mind, the $1.5 million grant that we secured in partnership with Representative Luzinski, it really does enable us to move forward on Phase 4. The Board had already approved OHM to do some of the early engineering work for Phase 4, but also the long lead permitting for getting across the river, which is a big, just a very long lead process. All of that is underway. So to forecast, there will be early in, probably even January, a presentation to the Board on the overall plan for Zeb Road, and I just want to forecast that and give everyone a heads up. I'll remind the Board that the other thing that was approved is for OHM to move forward on the application for a federal TAP grant. TAP is a federal acronym, Transportation Alternative Planning. It represents a funding source at the federal level. We are going to be submitting a TAP grant for the bridge across the Huron River, and I want to say for the Board and for our residents, exactly what we projected. With the passage of the Park and Pathway Village, we have been successfully able to leverage these outside funds, and there's just great work in progress for '22. So that coming together is kind of a five-year look ahead, the early planning for a public input process, the partnership with parks, on the update to the recreation plan, all that is great work in progress that will integrate the manager, the supervisor into as that comes to fruition next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Vogel. I see a hand raised. Trustee Jerome.
20 seconds. I just want to also reiterate, in that conversation regarding the PROS plan, because I know this has been an issue for many folks, there was a minimum of a half-hour discussion on how to enhance our survey of the public with regards to the PROS plan, just as there are big concerns regarding the master plan. So I just wanted to make sure there was quick mention of that, because there was quite a long discussion with regard to how to make that a better process. That's all.
Thank you very much. Trustee Noel, Roads Advisory Committee. Oh, you're muted.
There we go. We had a meeting on December 1st. We are going through a series of educational presentations so that the whole group has a better understanding of roads issues at this time. So at our last meeting, we heard from Roy Townsend, he gave us background information on the County Road Commission, their role. We will have future educational sessions. I believe Lou Kidder is presenting, and Jessica is presenting at our next meeting about funding sources. Our group has discussed website improvement and getting more information out on the township website. We had a resident attend the last meeting, and he had specific questions about his road and the poor condition of his road. So we'd like to get just some basic information posted on the website. One of the plans for the future will be for us to be able to advise the Road Commission in May of 2022 on the use of our matching funds. So we're studying that issue right now so that we all have a better understanding of the issue, and we plan to do that. We're also going to be discussing the issue of township-initiated SADs and resident-initiated SADs. So that will be coming up in a couple meetings. We're going to start to have discussions on that. So I think we have a good group. We're off to a good start, and I will keep everyone posted. Thank you.
See myself disinterred. So for my report, I just want to update people on the work that we've been doing to try and resolve the problem with the backlog of minutes to be approved. There have been a lot of discussions, and I think we have a fairly comprehensive plan for catching the township up on the approval of minutes. I know this has, this whole issue has become kind of fraught, and I want to try and step back from the conflict about it and treat it as a problem that needs to be solved. I think in the course of this, I've learned a lot about the sort of rules governing minutes and minutes approval, and the process for making amendments to the minutes, and also different sort of, I guess, perceptions and interpretations of what the record should or should not include and how it should be constructed. I think we have a plan that will clear this backlog and get us into position to hopefully take care of our minutes, our meeting minutes, on a more efficient basis going forward. But we have approximately 20-some hours of minutes, meeting minutes, where the, I think the determination is that we would be helped by having professional transcripts of those particular meetings. That includes the meetings of August 17th and 24th, meetings of September 14th and 28th, meetings of October 12th and 26th, and I would add the meeting of November 23rd. And these are our regular meetings that have occurred since October 17th. October 17th was a special meeting, but all the rest of those are regular meetings. Some of them were quite long, but most of them were somewhere in the neighborhood of three or four hours, which is pretty long. But in any case, there's a lot of material to cover and to encompass if we're doing kind of detailed minutes, as some of these have been. So the proposal that is added to the agenda later will address this question of the transcripts. But the other minutes, the other minutes in reviewing them, my proposal would be to include them on our agenda for the meeting on the 28th of December, and those would include the approval of the minutes for September 21st, 22nd, 23rd, and 27th, as well as the meeting of October 25th. Those were all special meetings, and my proposal would be that we approve those sets of minutes as they, at the draft minutes, as they have been presented to the Board. Now, there may be a need for some amendments in order to make sure that they comply with Open Meetings Act. In other words, we want to look to make sure that the vote counts are accurate and so on, so some sort of straightforward kinds of amendments, I think, but I don't see a need in my review of these for the kind of effort that would require a transcript of those meetings. And then on tonight's agenda, we have the three sets of minutes, one of which I think would qualify, I would recommend, for a transcript. But I've brought to this meeting my proposed changes to the November 9th minutes, so when we get to that, I propose to go through those changes, those amendments. But the special meeting of November 22nd, I think, like the other special meetings, I would propose that we approve that as it has been presented unless someone sees a kind of OMA sort of category of correction that needs to occur. That's the plan. Now, the problem with it is, or the shortcoming of it, I guess, which we can talk about further when we get to this agenda item later, is the cost of the transcripts, and so that we'll talk about when we get to that point on the agenda. And there's also an issue of timing, because it will take some time to produce the transcripts, and so that's another factor. But we can talk about that further when we get to that item later on the agenda. And with that, I would like to, you have a question?
Yeah, just a comment. We can talk further about it before the next meeting, but I appreciate we have to be, you know, flexible about how to get these approved. You know, I would maintain my preference to start at the beginning of August 17th and go forward. We decided to table those to a special meeting until the 28th, and I thought what we were going to do starting tonight was start at the present and move forward. So I would say I do have some concerns about wholly upending the order and doing them one here and one there, because they go linearly. So we can talk further about it, but I just wanted to register that I don't think it makes sense to say approve five of the six special meetings we had. But I don't know. We can talk further about it, but I would just ask that the Board, you know, consider the importance of, one, approving minutes at the beginning of the meeting, because, for example, tonight, there's topics we're talking about that are in the minutes from last meeting, so it's good to refresh everybody's memories. And, two, the importance of approving minutes in order, because it's a progression of activity that builds. So just a comment to your comment.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. Now, the consent agenda has been modified, so Item G1 and G8, Items G1, G8, and G9 have now been removed. So the consent agenda consists of items... So the consent agenda consists of items G2, G3, G4, G5, G6, G7, and G10. Is someone prepared to move the consent agenda? Moved by Flintoft?
I'll support.
Support by Noel. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoft? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to unfinished business. The first item of unfinished business is the request to authorize the hiring of Nancy Colasanti as temporary part-time assistant to support the treasurer's team. And I know this is the treasurer's report, but I'm hoping to call on both the treasurer and the township administrator to introduce this agenda item since this has been sort of a collaborative effort to bring this forward. Who would like to go first?
Well, I have said my thoughts a little bit tonight and the last meeting, so maybe David can elaborate in a little different respect. I, I would ask that he would.
Okay. All right. Thank you. David. All right. So I would first off ask if the, all of the trustees have had the chance to, or did you receive the materials that were sent?
Yes.
Okay. I was asked for opinion and, let me remove that for a moment. I was asked for opinion and information on this particular issue. And there was several of us, the, if my memory is correct, the supervisor, the treasurer, and the deputy treasurer, myself, had a conversation about what possibly could be a, be a process for this particular position. Looking at the various options, was there support staff in the building? There was a conclusion that there was not adequate support staff to reassign duties. Was there an opportunity for a outside part-time company like a, like Kelly's or Workforce or something along those lines? The conversation was the, the main focus is on tax implementation and BSNA software and that skill is probably not readily available due to the nature of the, of the program. Also, how long should this particular position be? So to make a long story short, the idea was proposed that this particular position be filled on a part-time basis. It be filled with a specific beginning date, be filled by a specific end date with a maximum number of hours, a not to exceed cost, a list of duties that were attached as part of the contract. And this would be an actual agreement between the township and the individual. This is not a, a long-term employee. This is a short-term contract for service for a specific purpose until March 31st of 2022. And the, the process would be similar to any other employee. My understanding is there was an application filed, there was an additional background check completed. So the, the normalization of the process for a, a, a contract person was, was discussed and reviewed. And what you see in front of you is the proposal for the contract for the, for the individual. This is a solution to the treasurer's request for additional assistance for the tax season from December now through the end of the fiscal year on March 31st of 2022. And I just like to add that you should also have received a modified version of the model motion for this agenda item. I hope everyone got that. I'll read it now just to make sure that everyone, because it didn't, it only went out to the, the board, it didn't go out to the public. I'll make sure that everyone has, you know, awareness of what the actual motion is that is being considered. So this would be to amend the budget of the general fund, fund balance to 101-1991 accounting slash finance activity for an amount not to exceed $10,800 or $27 an hour and authorize hiring Nancy Colasanti for a temporary position commencing on December 20th, 2021 through March 31st, 2022 to assist the treasurer and deputy treasurer per the duties defined in Appendix A of the employment contract. So the question is, shall this motion be approved? And I would go ahead and make that motion.
Pass for.
So the motion has been made by Hathaway, support by Palmer. Is there further discussion trustee, or excuse me, Clerk Flintoff?
And just to clarify the record here, you just made the, the motion on the new model motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
This one.
Got it. Yeah. A couple of comments here and I'll, I'll try to put it into one with my, my notes here. I just want to say I'm opposed to this. I appreciate the conversation with David this afternoon and I was able to give him some more information he, he hadn't had. And I'll remind everybody that it was just on November 9th that the board, we, we've already approved a very good deputy treasurer job description in July. I think that Diane worked on. It was just on November 9th that Donna announced the appointment of Sandy as the full-time deputy treasurer. So we now for the first time have two full FTE doing treasury duties, treasurer and deputy treasurer. It's been about a month or so. And meanwhile, we have negative one FTE in finance where most of the workload is and that remains a gap. We cannot fill that gap by filling treasury. They're two different functions separated by law and by good internal controls. So I would say first of all, this is really operationally not going to meet the needs that we have. I believe, and I provided the data at the last meeting, that, you know, there, there is not, I do not see the additional workload considering bringing in taxes, preparing the budget, even if the deputy treasurer does support Will's efforts on drafting up the new budget or the capital improvement plans. Those things do not take this much time. My second point is that this is the third time this has come up to the board and I think that there's a continual completion of issues, frankly, by some of the trustees, by the supervisor. And, and I'll, I'll just note in the background, Will says there's so many problems with the budget. It's so clear and that's just not true. I will say what I keep seeing again and again, and I know there is a lot of hope from trustee Vogel and maybe trustee Jerome in our prior conversations, that somehow there can be some flexibility in that filling this gap fills the gap over here. It doesn't. I will be coming back when the proposal is fully developed for a high-level second finance person to be a partner with two finance people. So there will be no savings here. And the reason is that this sort of design of trying to sneak in some of the financial reporting, the audit preparation, that stuff under the supervisor or the treasurer, it is operationally inefficient and it's also erodes our internal controls. Now, Will, I remember months ago tried to convince Diane Benson and me that this was okay, that Alice Owens had told him it was okay. And he had three columns. I'll tell you why this isn't okay. Just because you have a treasurer who has a deputy treasurer who may not personally take in cash and maybe this new assistant takes in cash, still it's this column here of taking in cash who would also be doing the financial reporting. As clerk, I tire of saying this, but I will say, the attachment to the contract includes four areas that I've already objected to. And I'm saying under MCL 41.75A, I do not grant consent for the board to delegate the following duties to this proposed position. The month-end and year-end financial activities fall squarely in finance. The annual audit, including preparation of schedule, spreadsheet, account analysis, as an information summary, a process which should not take six months, it should take two. And financial analysis, a preparation of financial reports as requested. The clerk is responsible for, under MCL 41.65, it actually says the township clerk shall prepare and maintain, the township clerk shall prepare and maintain the journals and ledgers necessary to reflect the assets, liabilities, fund equities, revenues, and expenditures for each fund of the township. I know it's a truth that some of you wish weren't there, but it is. And I've been taking responsibility for trying to improve the financial management of the township and move us toward best practice as we grow because we've done a great job. But our staff hasn't had enough support to do the job that it needs to do. Now, I would say that maintaining the books and reporting on the books really is one and the same. What this model is proposing is to have one person maintaining the books and somebody else looking at the books and reporting them. All the reports are virtually automated. There's certainly more sophisticated forecasting and things we can do as we get better data, but it makes no good sense operationally to do this. I don't think it's a good use of money. It's not where we need staff support in this organization. And I would object to it for those reasons. I'd also say on the motion specifically, this should not come out of finance. I would recommend it come out of 101 treasurer. I would ask who this person would report to, is it the treasurer or the deputy treasurer? I would ask for that clarification, David. And I would also say that the authorization is, as all of our authorizations for employees or contractors would be, pending completion of a background check. But the duties that this person is going to be able to help with are very few and far between. This is no comment on the individual. I don't know the individual, but I'm saying this position can support with administrative tasks and with taking in cash. Christie and Fran are already taking cash. Donna can take in cash. Sandy can take in cash. We don't need this position.
I want to respond. Number one, there will be, this person won't be doing records, reporting that you referenced in your comments. We're not in that area. All we do is make sure the taxes are properly recorded. We do pull the reports so the distributions are done. We don't do the distributions. We do not do the record keeping for the ledger. This person will not, NOT, capital letters, bold print, be taking in cash. She will not be working the counter.
Oh.
She will be working at the desk, getting these payments processed timely because there's been times when it might be a week before, I'm talking in the past, that these would be done. In past history before, Rebecca used to help with this too. She can hardly get done everything that you are trying, you know, that you need from her. It is strictly, as it states, a temporary position, part-time, for this heavy-duty period that's still ahead of us. And it's, it's not going to affect what you're, you're looking at, what we all need to really seriously sit down and talk about, the need for some other help. But we need people in the township hall that do the initial work. We don't need, well, first we need those. We may need people next step up to help with the, I guess a good term to use would be the sophisticated record keeping, getting things properly recorded in the ledger and so on. This is the first level and we do need this person. I know this person. I know she could do other things where another area of the township could use some help. We have troubles in utilities. I know she could help back there when I don't need her.
Can I ask a quick follow-up?
Sure.
So then, then why Donna, are you proposing in the scope of work, all of this stuff about the annual audit?
Well, there's things invested that affect the audit that we do.
Certainly, but this, this has the year, the, the month-end, year-end.
All of these job descriptions, you try to make it so a person could help, but sometimes there are way too many words. And I, we need to work our way in. We need to try. We always have a hard time reaching that step of trying to address the everyday needs in township hall.
Other members of the board or trustees? Trustee Noel?
I spoke to David Rowley this afternoon. I had a series of questions about this. I raised a series of concerns. He was able to respond, I think appropriately to my questions and he is stating that this position is a part-time position. There are parameters in terms of dates. He agrees it's a Band-Aid approach, but that the needs might be real and I, I'm not in a position to judge, so I have to rely on other people. And I, at this time, I'm willing to go along with this. I do have some reservations. The model, model motion was revised to include more detail, which is a concern I had. So I also have reservations and concerns about some of what Jessica has said. I do believe we need to fill that finance position soon and I, she raises valid concerns regarding encroachment on the clerk's statutory duties. And if indeed that's happening with this, that's a problem. So I am assuming that Jim Fink is going to weigh in on this issue. I won't ask him for an opinion right now unless he wants to give one, but he's going to have to be involved in these discussions and the clerk's statutory duties are going to have to be maintained. So there, there's going to have to be ongoing dialogue with all of you, but I'm prepared to support this.
I'd like, I'd like to also just make a, pass a thought on about one of your concerns. We do not get into the clerk's area of record keeping. We do not. This person will have nothing to do with that. If we don't properly record the taxes and I don't get them out to the schools and stuff, we have never seen what could happen to us as a township. And I don't work, by the way, 24/7, but I have had times when I took these things home and worked all weekend. This was before I had some help. You people don't understand the scope of what we have to do and it's, it's periodic. It's the, it's just- it's just the way it is. People wait until the last week to pay them before the end of the year. They wait until the last week to pay before the deadline. People are human, people are people. And we do need help at that level. You're reading into things that are not going to happen. We don't get involved in the record-keeping, only what we have to do for the role and to disperse.
Donna, if I could respond to that, okay.
Sure.
I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt. But I have a reservation. And I think that you now have a full-time deputy treasurer who will be doing a lot of work. And I truly don't know how busy you are during this time interval, so I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt. But I, I do recall last year, I believe you took a week vacation during this tax time.
Not during the heavy time, not during the heavy time. It was after all, the heavy piece had moved. My husband and I took a long weekend. Yes, I'll admit that.
Okay, but I'm just saying, you know, I, I have to sort through conflicting pieces of information. And I give, I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt, I'm going to vote yes on this, but I'm just raising some reservations and concerns that I think we all need to be mindful of.
Are there other members of the Board of Trustees who would like to comment on this? Trustee Jerome.
I'll try to be short, I just, I would like to not.
You're freezing up, you lost your audio.
Shortfalls in the budget and finance in terms of timing. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Sorry, I'll just turn my video off, but it's broadband. I would just say that, you know, there have been some issues in terms of creating timely documents with regards to across budget and finance, so I think there's obviously a need. And I think there's needs in many areas. I would suggest this is filling a gap, it's not filling all the gaps. I like the fact that it sunsets, that there's a very specific amount of time that would be addressing the situation which Donna has indicated is the heavy load. I do want to thank the administrator for, you know, really taking the time to sit down, talk to the individuals. I know that there's been consultation with Jim Fink regarding this, and I clearly, there is absolutely no intent to transgress on the statutory duties of the clerk with regards to this position. So I, I think it is a necessary move in the short term for these very specific amount of time, and I'm in support of moving it forward.
Thank you. Are there trustees who would like to comment, or? Or no? Trustee Corto, trustee Vogel?
Whoa. Yeah. Sorry, sorry.
Trustee Vogel.
Yeah, I'll just offer the observation that the onboarding of this new administrator is really critical. And he will have a very primary voice in, in human resource matters and in budget and finance matters. And I have a whole lot of confidence in the breadth and depth of experience and expertise he is, he is bringing. So exactly like trustee Jerome just said, this discussion tonight is on one very small piece of a larger puzzle that I'm really looking forward to this administrator getting a perspective on and offering a perspective back to the board as we really improve the overall budget and finance process. And I too will support this as part of a larger effort that is now underway, that gives me confidence.
I saw your hand raised, David.
Yeah, I would just like to say that my understanding of the situation and the need is that this is clearly a, a small fix, a short-term fix. It is clearly for the treasurer, and it should be funded respectfully through the treasurer. It is not an attempt by any yardstick to blend duties. I can tell you from personal experience in my career, a treasurer asking for additional support during tax season is not unusual. That is, that is completely within the realm of reasonability. However, I would offer the opinion that, that it does end. The treasurer said herself, the heavy season, there is a heavy season, but it does end, that's why there's a sunset on this. It will end on March 31st. It does not have options for renewal. It has a specific beginning date, it has a specific ending date, and it does have a specific set of tasks. And those tasks are to support the treasurer in, in her role within the tax collection, tax collection. And it is not, and should not intrude in any way into any of the duties or that are the responsibility of the clerk. This is clearly, in my view, a, a, a position that is the responsibility and the authority of the treasurer. And that's where, and that's, that was the point of my, my conversation and my input into it.
Trustee Corto, do you want to comment? You haven't commented yet.
Well, actually, Mr. Rowley jumped ahead and, and anticipated my comment. I was just going to ask for his comment, so thank you, I appreciate that. I, I think with that analysis and the understanding that this is a short-term problem and we are going to continue to dig into the larger set of budget and finance issues, I'm comfortable with this, and I would, if I could, like to just go ahead and call the motion.
Before we do that, could I, could I, oops, I'm sorry, I was just going to amend the motion. I, if the, because I had drawn this up based on, sort of using the motion that we had last August to hire temporary part-time help. And, and I had inadvertently used the wrong fund account, so I wanted to correct that in the motion. So where it says, "Fund balance to 101-1991 Accounting Finance", that should be changed to "Fund balance to 101-Treasurer", and we'll get the, the specific, you know, fund later, but that's, that's enough information to know from which fund we're, general fund we're pulling. So we have.
I, I have one more thing I need to address because it's been mentioned again tonight, and it's not the first time. I have always said from the beginning, when I appointed Sandy and asked for board approval as a full-time deputy, because of all the duties we now do that Mr. Murda used to do. But there's a wealth of information that Sandy has, having been with us for so many years. I want her to have the ability to work with whoever needs that kind of help way beyond me, because I don't do that stuff. I want her available for that too, and that was part of the reasoning when I asked her to be my full-time deputy, knowing my schedule and my demand, and yet freeing her up for budget, capital projects info. You guys, we have a resource that's unreal, and we're not using her enough. We need to do that. So I want her available when needed. That's just my comment on the full-time position.
Thank you. So one more comment, and then we'll, we'll, we'll have the, I don't think actually, trustee Corto, that we can call the question until we have public comment on this, because it's an action item. But Clerk Clinton.
Yeah, so another suggested amendment I mentioned, besides fixing the account number, Will, was to say, "Make this motion conform with our other offers of employment. Authorize hiring Nancy Colasante, comma, pending completion of a background check, comma."
No, I, I don't, I don't think that's necessary. We've already done enough background check on Nancy Colasante.
Then it's completed if it's been done, but that's how we offer everyone. I mean, the, what a background check means is, is different for each position. So something for a fire chief or administrator might be really in-depth, but for a position handling cash, we would want to do a basic criminal and credit check.
Yeah, and it's been done, so.
It's been done?
Yeah, I enlisted the help of the township attorney.
Has the administrator reviewed that?
I'm sorry? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Has the administrator received and reviewed the background check?
I've been, I've been informed that it's been done.
What service did we use?
We used the township attorney service.
I did a check that reveals many criminal things and shows judgments and liens. I did not do a credit check, I, I don't have the ability to do a credit check through a credit reporting agency.
And I would just, you know, note, I mean, Jim, I trust you, and again, let's normalize this process and not treat people we know differently than people we don't know, please. A question to David Rowley. Why are the duties in Appendix A what they are if the purpose is to support the treasurer in the tax collection?
The, the duties, when we, when we discussed them, there was to be a list developed, and what I was advised was that the model for those was used from a previous position.
Yeah, and, and I would just note, you know, not that you would know this, but at our previous meeting, that the, I will just note that the items I'm questioning and objecting to under MCL 41.75A is participating in month-end and year-end financial activities, annual audit, including preparation of schedules, spreadsheets, account analysis, and information summary, and the financial analysis and preparation of the financial reports as requested. So I will not be cooperating with the board's delegation of those duties to this position, that's all. And I would say, it would be nice, David, I'm not going to ask you or Donna on the spot, but I, this, this really has been the question for me of a time study, because I, I just, you know, we talked about that earlier this year. I'd be happy to participate with my staff as well and myself, but I just really think we need a time study.
Are there members of the public who would like to comment on this before we call the roll? I see someone present in the meeting hall who would like to comment.
Good evening. My name is Abby Vaquilleon. It's quite evident tonight, and there's a terror war going on inside our city government. I think all the departments have to be financed and staffed appropriately, and all the departments have to be respectful of one another. To me, looking from above, not being involved, there is certain statutory duties of the clerk. I think it would be very simple to ask Mr. Fink to come up with exactly what those statutory duties are and make sure that this proposal is in conformity, that it's not stepping on the toes of that department and vice versa. I think she has a need for a staff in her department for a different purpose, that she sees that as a greater weight, saying that her finance department needs a staff that is not being addressed and other departments being addressed. I think there's need across the board in both departments. What I think is that some of what's going on here is also because people, when they're in this position, they tend to kind of, everybody takes a position, sometimes bring some fresh thing and new blood in. I think both of the points are valid. I don't think anybody here has the intention of infringing on the statutory duties of a clerk, because this is statutory. But I think that might be a perception, you know, that the clerk has because of the way that things have transferred with her understanding. Again, this becomes a legal question, which I think you guys would be behooved to defer that to the city attorney or the township attorney, I'm sorry, and ask him to do an analysis for you and give you a legal opinion, basically saying, well, for this proposal that we have here, how in this part-time is that, there's certain objections that the clerk has. Are these objections that she have, how many of them and which one of them is valid? Which those are inherent duties and they can't be infringed on. And based on that legal opinion, then this fight would be over. Mr., our township attorney, Mr. Fink, would learn that a legal opinion saying that, from, for the sake of argument, from the list of these 10 duties that you're assigning to this person, four of it is the statutory rights of the clerk, these four you cannot have in here removed them. The others, six as an example, they're okay, that is a standard. But I think going down, there is kind of like, to me, the discussion tonight is like the two lanes of the railroad track. It's never going to cross. Everybody has taken an official position, you know, and everybody has taken kind of, and I'm not using this unkindly.
30 seconds.
Everybody is basically fighting for what they consider to be their tariffs. I think you guys have a lot more in common than, which unites you than divides you. But I think you need to use a different point of view and a different methodology to come to a neutral, unbiased, you know, opinion that you alternate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other members of the public present who would like to speak to this particular item? Please come up to the table.
As it has been said, I've been the deputy treasurer for about a month and working my way through learning processes that I was never a part of before, because I was not part of the treasurer's specific responsibilities. We have taken a new approach where we are depositing money daily rather than allowing several days to accumulate at a time. And we're also processing and journalizing the online payments daily rather than in batch, which should make the clerk's responsibility of reconciling the bank statements a much smoother process. At least that's the hope. But to give you some idea of what we've been doing, in the past couple of weeks, the payments have picked up significantly from about $225,000 per day to, yesterday's batch was $550,000, which accounted, included, give or take around 150 payments, which was 150 envelopes to open, date stamp and all of that process. We also had in just yesterday's batch 12 payoffs from title companies, which require additional processing, and two special assessment payoffs, which require additional processing. Prior to that, many of the title companies had looked at what was due to pay off special assessments prior to them being committed to the tax rolls, so we had a great deal of work to do to split a check in half between two different funds and two different processes. This is only going to continue to escalate through the end of December and then again mid-January through mid-February. I can assure everybody, because it is a condition she placed on us, that she will not touch anything relating to the clerk. Not interested in doing that. As far as schedules and things that may be required for month-end and year-end, those don't exist just in the clerk's world, they also exist in the treasurer's world, and that's what she will be assisting us with. It has been taking me approximately four to six hours every day, with the exception of Tuesday, because we don't get mail on Tuesdays for some reason, to process the incoming cash receipts and total everything out for the day and pick up the online payments over the weekends and things like that. But what is also sitting on my plate that I've had great difficulty in finding the time for is assisting the DDA in their analysis of future tax increment revenues so that they can determine what projects, if anything, to take advantage of the low bond market in. Also working, looking at the same kind of conditions for the roads project. Also working, looking at the same kind of conditions for the roads projects and the utility projects.
Andy, I don't, I don't mean it. I'm not going to cut you off. As a member of the township, I just want to be mindful of the time, that that's three minutes, but you're welcome to continue and finish your.
Okay, just one more quick thing.
That's fine. I just wanted, I just wanted to be mindful of the time. Thank you.
Yes. I also have received requests from the roads committee to look into and assist them in analyzing what has occurred prior in special assessments. These are all very time sensitive. They all want it by the end of the month. If I keep having to work only on cash receipts, that's not going to happen. Thank you.
Other members of the public who would like to address during public comment on this item?
Let me, sorry, let me get back to my screen. If so, please raise your Zoom hand. Let's see, first up is Kathleen Brandt, followed by Jonathan Greenberg. Kathleen?
Hi, Kathleen Brandt, Sial Township. I have been asking this question for about six months, and I've never gotten an answer from the treasurer. And I pointed an example to, Celine Township has a total of 2,000 residents. I do not know the number of houses they have there, but it's a fraction of what Sial Township has. On their webpage, on the homepage, there is a link to do online payments. On my tax bill, which I have in my hand, it says, "Make check payable to Sial Township Treasurer." I have been asking when you are going to make online payments available so that this will alleviate that work. I have never gotten an answer to when that process is going to happen. So to say that this is overwhelming, and it's always going to be overwhelming, when there is a solution that I don't see being pursued. As a taxpayer, I don't want my taxes paid for inefficient processes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jonathan Greenberg. Jonathan?
Hi, yeah, thank you for listening to me. I want to take a slight tangent off the last speaker's comment and ask why our township finds it so difficult to open envelopes and stamp things? I mean, most large organizations have figured this out. There's machines, there's technology, and it doesn't have to be so hard. I've offered in the past to help with any kind of technology improvement. It's something that I've been doing for 30 years. There's a lot of options from taking this information on, or, sorry, taking payments on the internet, through auto transcription services, to making official meeting minutes, just our video with the transcript. I just see and continue to see a rejection of technology, but like two commentators ago, just complaining and dissatisfied with the role, probably because they're not using modern tools and technology, and so their manual process seems daunting and difficult. But there's a lot of solutions out there, and I would encourage the board, the rest of the community, into listening to the residents, understanding what their priorities would be, whether it would be, because I understand you have limited resources and time. If it would be something like, which would be more of interest, for example, the suggestion of taking payments online, or perhaps having a, an online chat feature where folks at the desk could talk to residents directly, so they don't have to come into the shop or make a phone call. And those kinds of communications can be distributed more easily amongst multiple people. I don't know, it just seems like a lot of self-inflicted wounds here, so let me know if I can help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jonathan. I see no other interested public. Will?
I have a request from the treasurer to respond to a question of fact during the public comments.
The question on online payments, we have had that. We have two options for online, and people are using them, so it is available. And I'm sorry if any information or communicate or questions weren't asked, but we have that, we have that available. Interesting about the comment on opening envelopes, I don't know any other way than splitting them with an envelope opener and pulling out the checks, but we were worried about that in the future.
Yeah, so if I could respond to that, there are.
No, it's not a dialogue, it's not a dialogue.
As well as, it's not? Okay, well, I'm sorry, I thought so.
Thanks.
All right, and now trustee Corteau, your earlier motion is germane to call the question. And so that's what we will do. I would like to read it aloud, though, to make sure that we have the actual motion in mind. So this would be to amend the budget of the general fund, fund balance to 101-dash-treasurer activity for an amount not to exceed $10,827 an hour, and authorize hiring Nancy Colasanti for a temporary position commencing on December 20th, 2021, through March 31st, 2022, to assist the treasurer and deputy treasurer per the duties defined in Appendix A of the employment contract. It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
No.
Corteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Bring us to the next item of unfinished business. This is the records retention policy for video recordings of board of trustees meetings. This is brought forward again. It's been reviewed by the township attorney. We discussed this at our meeting with the township attorney on Monday and made some modifications to the motion, which are, I believe, in the same document that was sent out to the board, but I would like to read it so that everyone has it in front of them. This is that move, this would be moved that the Sial Township Board of Trustees declares that all video recordings made by the township of the board of trustees meetings will be retained for at least five years, and that the township will take the necessary steps to make this record easily available to the public via the township website, and the board directs the township administrator to work with the supervisor and clerk to develop a policy to implement this motion. And so the question is, shall this motion be approved? I would make this motion. Is there a second?
I have support.
So moved by Hathaway, support by Palmer. Is there discussion? Clerk Flintoff?
Yes. Couple pieces of background to respond to earlier public comment. The current law is governed by state law. These are records of the clerk by law. There's no getting around that. So Jackie, Will, I appreciate you're taking some time to think through how to improve the motion, because at the end of the day, it's my responsibility to make sure that these records exist, and we have never kept digital records for 12 times as long as the state requires us to. Currently, we keep the audio or video recordings for six months or until the minutes are improved. That's the law. Our status is, we keep all of them. Since April 2020, we've kept them all. As you know, the board finally approved the Granicus module, and once that happens, we'll actually have the technology to be able to keep all of these for as many committees as we want, and it will be automated so that it is not such a hard lift for staff. So Jackie, you emailed earlier when you got back about the links on the website no longer working. I'm not surprised. As I described before, that was a workaround. I had fixed out, I had fixed up in an effort to be helpful. I'm not surprised that that imperfect workaround stopped working at some point. So again, we can't actually do this until the technology is implemented, which is underway. The hardware should be in this month. The software configuration happens in January. But with that, and consistent with the conversation we had, I wanted to suggest a couple of edits to this, to bring it in line with what I thought we had discussed, Will. And I'll just say, these are, let me get down to the end here, directs the township administrator to work with the supervisor, clerk, IT firm, and office coordinator. I would be remiss to sit here and try to pass a motion that doesn't involve the two entities that will be implementing this. And to develop a draft policy, not a policy, but a draft policy, to return to the board with, for approval. And I want to be very clear that I support, I support this, but I'm not going to support a motion that makes this effective until we have a policy and a procedure and the operational, operations in place to actually do this. So I would ask that, it says, implement this motion, Will, just to be clear, and I think this was your intention, to develop a draft policy to come back to the board for approval, at which point this policy would take effect. Was that your intention?
A draft policy?
Or because the policy, we're not going to develop a policy and implement it. We're going to develop a policy, it's going to come back to the board for approval, a thought-out policy with a procedure, come back to the board for approval. At that time that the board approves it, it takes effect.
Oh, that is not what we discussed on Monday. That is.
I thought that's what we discussed.
No, that is not what we discussed on Monday. We talked, I took notes, and we talked about having the township administrator work with the supervisor and clerk to develop a policy to implement this motion. That's an acknowledgement that this is a process, that we're declaring that these videos, this record, these records are to be retained for five years, and that we want to make them available, but it's also an acknowledgement that in order to accomplish that, we will have to, you know, work out some bugs, work out some details. And so I don't think there's a need to sort of name the office manager or name the IT, because that's implicit in working together, the township administrator working together with the supervisor and clerk to develop a policy to implement this motion. Whether that policy needs to be brought back for board approval is also not something that we talked about on Monday.
I had recalled that we talked about that. So my question, Will, and my concern is, when would this take effect? Under your language that you're proposing here tonight, Will, does this take effect tomorrow? Or when the policy's done? And when is the policy done?
This acknowledges, I believe, that the effect of the status of the recordings is immediate. So in other words, the declaration by the board of trustees that the video recordings made by the township of the board of trustees meetings will be retained for at least five years, that takes effect immediately. It's not contingent on some other action that has to happen after tonight. The other part of this is an acknowledgement that in order to make these records easily available to the public via the township website, is going to take some more work, and that the township administrator will take the lead, working together with the supervisor and the clerk in making that happen. And it will, of course, involve other people on staff. They don't, we don't need to name them. And of course, it will involve our IT support. It's sort of implicit. I don't understand why there's this need to sort of build into this another step, another step of board approval.
No, with all due respect, Will, I really thought that that's what we had discussed and what's been important to me, particularly with the, you know, you know, it's a misdemeanor, right, to destroy a public record. These are my public records. Certainly, you know, members of the public have thrown around that, you know, in regards to this. And, and so I am not going to, as I rejected Jackie's and rejected yours before, I would not say I am putting in place that I, tonight, we're retaining videos for five years, when I don't have the technology or staff to do that. I will in two months when the policy's developed. I'm totally on board. I would love everything to be out there immediately. I'm not the webmaster. I took over when Bryce left as a favor. And here we are, a pandemic later.
So I've answered the question about whether there's a need for additional changes to the motion. I decline the suggested changes to the motion. Are there other comments from other members of the board of trustees? Trustee Jerome?
I'll be pretty brief, I think. I mean, the board of trustees and the public should have access to.
I think you're going to need to sign off your video.
That just goes without saying. I don't know, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I would just, I would just say that the board of trustees and public should always have access to the recordings of the meetings. I think this is sort of incumbent upon the township. You know, I've heard in the past, you know, people say, well, you know, you can find them on YouTube, and that's just not appropriate for any township or municipality. We have invested in equipment, technology, the Granicus module, and for anyone to refer somebody to a social media platform, whether it be Facebook or YouTube, Nextdoor, Twitter, for official communication and/or information from a township is just inappropriate. It is unsuitable, and it's not being a proper steward of the official record of the township proceedings. We need to have this in place. I would agree that we can, we can say that, yes, we agree that these recordings will be captured for the five years, and that it is conditioned upon the fact that you're going to create a policy like the motion suggests that will support, and I understand this is not going to be implemented in a day, but that would support the coordination and the resources of the clerk, administrator, supervisor, the IT, and any other support staff that would have to be integrated into that process. But I just think this is so long overdue, and that's the reason we supported the Granicus module. This is a no-brainer. We need to provide this as part of our record for township proceedings.
Other members of the board of trustees? Seeing none, are there members of the public who would like to comment?
Will, I wanted to comment on something Alex said. He mentioned condition down, and I agree with that. But Alex, that's not what this motion says.
Trustee Corteau?
I just wanted to, again, ask Mr. Rowley about his advice on how to put together the technological and staff support to do this, and whether that's something that can recently be done.
Well, I would agree with the comments here that record retention is critical, and I don't think there's any disagreement with that. You want to make sure, I'm just learning the, what is it, Granicus? Yeah, I'm just learning the Granicus model. I've been given access to it, and I'm just now trying to maneuver through that. So to be fair, I'm not familiar with every aspect of it, but.
So to be fair, I'm not familiar with every aspect of it, but the, the concept is that we maintain the, as I understood it, we maintain those file or those videos and they will be, they will be more of a cloud-based program. The five years, I believe, is a, is a fair assumption. We had this conversation because the state statute only requires six months. Six months, I think by any yardstick you want to use is, is way too limited. There are some records that are kept permanently. However, the, the opinion was technology changes. And I can tell you for a fact, there's some government records that were kept a certain way are no longer available technology-wise. They had to be converted to something else and some of those conversions were not very successful. So the five years seem to be a reasonable expectation for that, for that record retention. The, a policy definitely does need to be developed and we certainly will, will take that seriously and get the resources and staff in place to do that. I would like to have conversations with everyone as to the amount of staff time that's needed and the expertise of staff. As they say, I'm just brand new to the Granicus model. We may need someone, we may need some, some internal house IT support because we are looking at some automation going forward with additional programming needs. Some of the comments have been made tonight and there's some other things that, that are on the planning table for additional computerization of things. So this may develop into some additional support for a particular person to, to help be responsible for that particular aspect. But it, it's needed, it's needed. And I would like the opportunity to have some time to work on the, on the, on the model. I know the, the implementation is, is designed for, for January. So we'll have to see if we can coordinate something to, to be somewhat in conjunction with that.
And I, I think we can. I, I would just say the policy's got to be adopted by the board. What, what is a policy if not adopted by the board?
If, if the township administrator deems that there's a need for this policy to be adopted by the board, then we'll do that. But it doesn't, the, the action of protecting the videos for five years is not contingent on having a policy. And the intent of making them available is not, you know, saying that doesn't require that we wait until we have a formal policy. We're basically saying, this is what we want to do. This is how we want to make them available and we're going to develop a policy for it. You know, if, if the policy has to come back for adoption, that's fine. The motion doesn't have to spell out every single detail of who's going to be involved, what the process is going to be. That is placing a burden on a simple action by the Board of Trustees that is really unnecessary.
It's not simple.
And, and now, if there aren't any further comments from the members of the Board of Trustees, are there comments from the public? I see no one in the meeting hall who is raising their hand to speak on this topic. Are there members of the public participating remotely who would like to make a public comment?
Yes. First up, Alice Owings, followed by Jillian Carey. Alice?
Thank you. I, I do just want to point out, and I think that you've highlighted it, Jessica, but I, I'm not quite sure that it was clear, but I think under the Michigan statute that clerks may delete any audio or video recordings the day after the board approves minutes. And so it's not as simple to say that there's some, you know, misdemeanor or something along those lines. And obviously this all feeds into our concerns about approval of minutes as well. So, you know, that is, is, I, I think one of the concerns that really goes to the heart of this and why, you know, having a board statement to the fact that we are not going to follow that particular subsection of the state statute on records retention for clerks of townships. And we instead are going to use our own. And, you know, with respect to all of the details and the ins and outs of that, that's why I think having this statement and having it approved by the board is appropriate and important at this particular time where there is such a large number of, of issues swirling around. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Next up is Jillian Carey, followed by Rob Pattinson. Jillian?
Good evening. I'm looking at this records retention policy for video recordings and I'm reading through it. It says suggested action, approve a policy for retention of the video recordings of Board of Trustees meetings. And then as I read through, it gives some information, but then it says at the bottom, model motion, let's just skip, agrees that all video recordings made by the township of Board of Trustees will be retained for at least five years and township will take necessary steps to make this rec, this record easily available via the township website. Okay, so is that the policy? Because it doesn't seem like that is a policy. It just seems like it's a draft of what you intend to do with a policy. So that's a little confusing. And as far as the record retention, I noticed on the website that there are some videos and some are missing. So I know by reading the Open Meetings Act that when the minutes or recordings or whatever within, to be available within eight business days by the public body, which means the board. So I decided to call the township hall and I asked Christie. I said, Christie, could I have the, the video for October 26th? And she said, certainly. And within five minutes, it was in my email box, my inbox. So I don't understand what the problem is, that it almost seems like it's an attack on the clerk to, to say, you're not keeping these videos or these minutes or whatever. It's amazing. So could we have some clarity on this motion? Is this a policy itself or is it an idea for a policy? And if it is an idea for a policy or draft, then what Clerk Jessica has been saying is she's bringing up the details that should be in a policy. What's, can you come together and create a policy with details so there's no assumptions? And everything's very clear for even a, a layperson to come and read it and understand it? Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. Next up is Kathleen Brandt. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Yeah, sorry. Excuse me. Next up is Rob Pattinson, followed by Kathleen Brandt. Rob?
Thank you. Just to highlight the significant need for this policy. In the last six months, there have been 3,543 views on the YouTube channel of all meetings. And with the adoption of the Granicus module, I would say that the SIO Township website is many times more accessible to people than the SIO Community News YouTube channel. Then in other words, if someone's searching for information about SIO, they're going to find the SIO website much easier than they'll find the YouTube channel. So with thousands of views in just six months, this is a very important policy that you're putting together and I highly recommend that you do it properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Kathleen Brandt, followed by Pam Boyd. Kathleen?
Yes. First, I want to reiterate what I said at the beginning of this meeting. I have great concerns that this board, some of these board members will pass a motion to take action, but they will not take action to address the staffing increase that occurs. I have great concerns for that. I've seen it in the past. Secondly, I agree that this needs to be formalized as a policy. This is not a policy. If you are diverting from Michigan statute, you need to enact a policy that clearly states that. I think you would be ill-advised to just do a motion. But maybe you could talk to Attorney Owings on that because she seems to be giving advice in something that is not in her realm of expertise, which she tells us is corporate law. Now, third, I want to mention that the effort to get these recordings via a technology platform, Granicus, if you all recall, five out of the seven trustees denied that request on the first go around. It was too much money, but it's easy to spend $10,800 for paper pushing, but you denied that the first time for Granicus. We recall that. In the second setting, it was approved. And listen, note that trustee Vogel was not in attendance and I believe that had something to do with it getting approved because I believe she fights everything that Jessica does. And she does it justice matter, of course. She doesn't even think about how biased she is. But those are my points. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next up is Pam Boyd. Pam?
Wow, stop the presses here. Clerk Flintoff has said forever that she is not going to delete the videos. And the attacks on the clerk for months have been many. I don't blame her for wanting to get the language correct. And, and I agree with Ms. Brandt that the clerk has been trying to get this Granicus in front of you and approved for months and the fact that you're now saying it's long overdue and a no-brainer? Oh, please allow me to throw up.
Okay, I'm glad you're on Zoom right now. Thank you, Pam. Next up is Jonathan Greenberg. Jonathan?
Hi. I'm not here throwing up, I'm just a little bit disgusted by the lack of transparency and honesty here. But all that aside, has been said so far applies. This is a pretty easy, simple problem to solve. I'm glad that the pressure on the leadership has now brought them to see things the way that Jessica's seeing them. Nice little backhanded slap at her. But, you know, that notwithstanding, move it forward, learn it. Also, I put a link in the chat, or you, it'll take you to Amazon. A pretty standard automatic envelope opener. You put a whole stack in there, can do 7,000 an hour. It's a pretty cool thing. You click on that. All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Jonathan. I see no other interest in public. Will?
In that case, let's call the question. The motion is, let's read this over again, that the SIO Township Board of Trustees declares that all video recordings made by the township of the Board of Trustees meetings will be retained for at least five years and that the township will take the necessary steps to make this record easily available to the public via the township website. And the board directs the township administrator to work with the supervisor and clerk to develop a policy to implement this motion. Shall this motion be approved? Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? No. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. You know that wasn't what we talked about yesterday morning.
The next item on the agenda is the, oh, sorry, I lost my place. Is H3, the authorization to purchase two Dodge Durango special service vehicles. And Chief, please come up and explain this to us.
Good evening, board. So I want to give you a broad overview of vehicles first. Earlier this year, the board authorized us to replace a rescue vehicle. Unfortunately, we have been unable to do so so far. We budgeted shy of $60,000 to do so, but as we began looking at vehicles, the global chip shortage had basically shut down every auto plant. So as it stands today, we're unable to order anything from Chevy or Dodge. Ford has just begun their process of fleet sales for 2022 model year vehicles that we, we should be able to order. However, expect a delivery is summer to fall before we can get that vehicle replaced. That being said, part of this process as well, when we brought Doug on board as the Assistant Chief, we needed a vehicle for him. And unfortunately, in the fire I had in my home, my work vehicle was lost as well. So funds budgeted just shy of $60,000. There's going to be insurance money coming in to replace the vehicle I had. Our big picture is that we want to electrify our staff vehicles. Right now, the technology exists, but it's not readily available to do so. And it doesn't meet the needs for our rescue. So when I was reaching out to the Ford dealers to inquire as to purchasing or reserving one of the electric F-150s, they said it will be on the state bid spec that should be available. Problem being is that it's going to be on a reservation basis like the, the regular customer vehicles. Anyone that wants one does not guarantee the vehicle. Townshipwide, we have a need for four. Utilities needs two electric vehicles to, for their fleet, they've got vehicles need to be replaced. And the fire does as well, our two staff vehicles. Our goal is to try to reserve four electric F-150s. However, that, that, that works for Utilities Department as their vehicles are still operational. As for Fire, we have the immediate need now for two vehicles. Doug, Assistant Chief Armstrong needs something to be out in the field with, as do I for emergency response. So that being said, earliest we could get an electric vehicle potentially is this summer. By the time we were to outfit one, we're looking at a fall. So we looked at various other ways to meet this need. We looked at renting vehicles in the interim. We're looking anywhere from $2,000 to $3,000 a month for the vehicles we need. And that got us back into looking at what vehicles were available in the special service vehicle line, which is essentially a vehicle that's equipped for police-style work, which is what we normally get our staff vehicles from. Chevy Tahos, we can get in probably September. It's one of the least economical models, they're all eight-cylinder motors. Ford has their, I believe it's the Explorer, it's a six-cylinder turbocharged vehicle. And again, they're taking orders for those now. Expect a delivery summer to fall. And then we reached out to the Dodge dealer and there's two different ones on the, on the platform. The Dodge dealer in Warren has one vehicle available. It's an eight-cylinder model. And the Dodge dealer in Lansing has two of these special service Durangos in a six-cylinder version that should be in this month. Those two vehicles, 32, 715 each, plus some outfitting, that, that represents the most economical way we can meet our needs short-term. Best-case scenario, we reserve four electric F-150s and Star's lineup and they sell us four. We will have these vehicles probably nine months in our fleet if the board allows me to purchase them today, at which time we'll outfit our, our electric vehicles and be able to auction these off for, my guess is pretty similar to what we paid for them. So I really consider this more of a stopgap measure until we can outfit our, our fleet electrically. If we're able to get, say, two, we would have two that are work, we'd be able to let utilities have those, begin electrifying their fleet and go from there. That being said, we also took a look at what it would cost to order one of these Durangos next model year. So the same vehicle in a 2022 versus the 2021s that are available are just shy of $2,000 more. There are four coming in, those are the rest of the 2021s that are coming into the state this year. Those are the rest of the 2021s that are coming into the state this year.
Question?
Yes.
What's the cost within the charging stations? We never hear that when we're people are talking about moving forward.
I met with Op Electric. That's the contractor that did the electric renovation of the station. And their guy came out and they evaluated our station, and I brought him over to Utilities, and they're evaluating Utilities. I don't have those prices yet.
Are there questions or comments from members of the Board of Trustees? Clerk Flintoff?
Sure. I think this is really well researched. I appreciate your collaboration with Utilities, and I support this. I know that we will move toward electrification of our fleet, but support this in the interim. So thanks for researching all this so well.
You're welcome.
Trustee Corto?
I just wanted to echo those comments and thank Chief Hood for, I do appreciate your efforts and your dedication to working toward electrification. And I understand that both with the backup in all vehicles and then the delays in electric, that it's maybe not going to happen as much as we want, but I appreciate that you are keeping that as eyes on the prize for that to eventually happen. So I support moving ahead with this.
Other members of the board? I see none. I'm sorry, I see one now. Trustee Jerome?
Sorry, I was keeping my video off because I was afraid you wouldn't be able to hear me. I just want to say that there's a number of state funding opportunities right now that are available to support the electric charging stations that I want to make sure that we take advantage of and take in review. I know in a number of areas that the state has been very active in trying to set aside funds that will support the charging capacities and quick charging versus the slow charging. So I just want to make sure, and it appears that Andy's being very thorough, but make sure that we check out all the avenues possible.
You got a response?
Yeah, just a brief comment. Absolutely. In meeting with Utilities, Steve Wygowski indicated his needs are generally an overnight charging for a vehicle as they're, they'll be sitting in the building overnight, so we're looking at that. And on the fire side, they would be charging throughout the day as Doug and I are, I'm sorry, Assistant Chief Armstrong or I would be in the building and not out in the field. So yeah, we're, and we're working with DTE and the, I'm sorry, committee that, Sustainability Committee.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, thank you. We're working with the Sustainability Committee to see what options DTE would have for incentives to help us to get this infrastructure built.
Are there other comments or questions from members of the board? Are there members of the public who would like to comment?
Say it.
Oh, if you would like to come up, please come up.
I'm generally going to say a couple of comments about our fire chief. Way back when John Efshko was our interim fire chief, I had a community-wide issue that I approached him. He didn't go anywhere shortly thereafter. At least by phone, but Andy, and I will tell you that we are very fortunate to have him as a fire chief. I will tell you that he is a problem solver. I will tell you, he's a man of compromise. He listens to both sides, and I think he's a very good example for our township government. He's a good role model. I will also tell you that he's a detailed guy, and he does his research, and he's always looking at the better interest of the community. I also want to just say three quick comments. So democracy is the worst form of government except every other one. So when some of us, you know, get disheartened about the process, nobody likes to watch the sausage-making process. We just like the sausage. So keep that in mind that, you know, that this is the process by which we are going through. But I think, you know, two group of people in this world and problem solvers, problem makers, I hope we are all problem solvers. And also, black and white are two absolutes of the two ends. Most life is gray, shades of gray in between. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to meet you, partner. Sweet to meet you.
Are there members of the public participating remotely who would like to speak to this topic?
I see no hands.
In that case, would someone like to make the model motion to purchase two Dodge Durango special service vehicles from LaFontaine CDJR Lansing for $32,715 plus title, and to outfit the vehicles as emergency vehicles following the established purchase policy in an amount not to exceed $80,000, $8,430 from budgeted funds in Fund 206?
So many.
Moved by Clerk Flintoff.
Wait, I thought you were talking about four. No, we've got a need for two in the fire department.
Oh, yeah, but there was four somehow.
Yeah, big picture, we want to get four electric vehicles.
The long term.
Okay, the long term. All right. Two, four, uh.
So we have a motion by Clerk Flintoff. Is there support?
Support.
Support by trustee Corto? Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
And I've had a request for a break. If we could take a, I don't know, a five-minute break for everyone, and then we'll come back after that to complete the agenda.
All right. The Board of Trustees is in recess. Putting the mics in the room?
Recording in progress.
And we are recording. Will?
We're back in our meeting. That brings us to item H4, which is to set a public hearing and possible action on ordinance amendments to Chapter 6, Amusements and Entertainments, and Chapter 18, Fire Prevention and Protection. And this is from the clerk, so please.
Sure. I think you have all the information you need. Everything is vetted and ready to go. I'd recommend setting the hearing, both the hearing and the possible action, for January 11th on the ordinance amendments to both Chapter 6 and Chapter 18. There's been no debate. I don't expect any opposition, and so I'm comfortable recommending the public hearing and potential action on the same night so that we can get our fire prevention program rolling with the proper code in place, and also get our fireworks ordinance up to date and in the right chapter. Any questions? So we need a motion?
Well, there is a model motion to set a public hearing and possible action for January 11th on ordinance amendments to Chapter 6, Amusements and Entertainments, and Chapter 18, Fire Prevention and Protection. Moved by Palmer?
Support?
Support by Flintoff. Are there any comments, questions? Seeing none. This is an action item, however, so are there members of the public who have a comment?
I see no hands.
In that case, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel? Oh, I'm sorry, is Noel back? Okay. Kathy Noel? Kathy Noel is absent. Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to new business. First item is I1. This is the 2022 poverty exemption policy, and this is actually from the assessor. Would you like to make any comments or, I don't want to put you on the spot.
No. The only change was in the dollar amount that the federal government came out with. So for the township, I doubled it, and it's in the guidelines. I think it's page, page five. So those are the new numbers for this year. Otherwise, I mean, it's basically same as last year. Just cleaned it up, added a few more checklists and whatnot to make things easier.
And I just wanted to thank you for making things a little more clear and easier and just encourage you to keep going in that direction. This is such a complicated process.
Yeah, and most, yeah, most people are elderly.
Yeah.
And like today, we had a, her daughter helped her, so anything to make it easier for them is what we tried to do.
Well, having all of the materials makes it, in some ways, that makes it more real. I know last year when we approved this, it just seemed like a formula, and now with all of these materials, I have a sense of sort of more what it's like to go, you know, to have to go through this process and make an application for a poverty exemption.
Yeah, it's a sensitive, there's a lot of pride involved, and just trying to make it easier, I feel, is what I can do.
Are there any other comments or questions from members of the board? I don't see any hands raised. Are there members of the public who have a comment?
Is the hand back here?
Oh, yes, sorry. I was looking at the screen.
I appreciate our assessor dabbling the federal poverty guidelines for the people of Syo Township. However, let's be realistic. The federal poverty guidelines have been a sad low because if the government would adjust it, they would have a revolution in their hand. To claim that the federal poverty guidelines are only $12,000 or $13,000 a year, someone can use $1,000 or $1,200 a month to take off their rent, utilities, cars, kids and stuff. That's absolutely ridiculous. It's a political statement from the bygone times. Syo is an expensive township. Although we have dabbled the poverty exemption, it is not sufficient, in my opinion, having been in real estate for many years. It is not a cheap township. We are living in Syo Township, although taxes are lower than Ann Arbor, but this is a pretty expensive township. I think you're going to find a lot of people, elderly people and the people at the lower level, to have a hard time adjusting to these numbers as good as you guys' fate is. And I know people are going to be screaming, "No socialism! Socialism for the poor, for the middle class, but let's bail out the banks." So in my opinion, another look should be given, and adjustment based on the standard life of Syo Township should be given because after all, if we can take off the most vulnerable people of our society, we are as good as the Roman Empire, which at the end fell apart from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public on Zoom? If so, raise your Zoom hand. I see none. Will?
Well, in that case, please call the, what? We have a motion made yet?
No.
No, we need someone to make the motion. Sorry.
I think trustee Corto has a question.
Trustee Corto?
Sorry, I did have a question, just responding to the public comment and then directing this to Larsa. I wonder if you could share your thoughts on whether the poverty exemption should be increased even more based on your understanding of cost of living in Syo?
Before I did all this work, I went to each and every city and township in Washtenaw County and looked at what their policies were. Most of them stick to just what the federal guidelines are. About 50% doubled it like we do, and only one did 2.25. So we're right in line with the rest of Washtenaw County. So I think this is fine because we had two cases come in today. One was a single lady who is 73 years old, and one was a single mother of three kids, and they qualified based on these guidelines. They got 100% off.
Larsa? Have we had any applications that have been denied this year?
I know there's a couple, but they've only been denied because they didn't supply all the information.
Thank you. And I just got a reminder from Mary that we should ask speakers to identify themselves if they wish to.
Oh, all right.
I would support the model motion if there's further discussion.
So moved by Jerome. Support by Vogel? That the board adopt the attached resolution establishing the poverty exemption guidelines for 2022. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
The next item is I2. This is appropriation of funds for a solar array at the Syo Township Fire Station Building. And Chief, you're up again.
So, thank you, Board. Many of you may not know this, but as we underwent renovations, put in place, spent a couple extra dollars to prepare for the solar storage power of the building. Meeting with Jan Culbertson, Chair of the Planning Commission and Sustainability Task Force. She, she was pretty excited by that. I had a brief conversation with her. She gave me the name of someone to reach out to, local company that does this type of work. And I was actually quite surprised how inexpensive it was to design a system that would meet 100% of the needs of the building. That being said, in conversations with the vendor, he indicated that there's a cap on the amount of solar that DTE will allow to be installed. And we're fast approaching that cap. So I thought rather than wait for next budget year, I should bring this to the board to get this ball rolling now. His anticipation is the summer or fall, we could be to the point where DTE won't allow us an additional, to, to put solar in for a building. The design this gentleman brought to me would meet 100% of the electricity needs of the building. And additionally, it would be expandable so that when we do begin electrifying our fleet, we would be able to add on six solar panels per vehicle that we electrify to meet the needs of those vehicles as well. With that being said, brought this, had this conversation with, with our administrator and our clerk. And with that, Mr. Rowley indicated that this would be a reasonable expenditure from the general fund. Regardless of if the money comes from the fire fund, the general fund, I'd honestly want to get this, this moving. You know, with, with the timeline, time limit out there for, for the DTE solar, as well as I want to reduce my electric bill by two-thirds or more, so. I, this, this, obviously, the system wouldn't work at nighttime, so during the day, we'd be selling electricity back to DTE, repurchasing electricity at night. We would still have some transmission costs in there from my understanding of the electricity we purchase, but, you know, I think we can reduce our electric bill by two-thirds as well as meet 100% of the needs of the electricity in the building. And that's police and fireside.
And this step tonight would just be to appropriate the $50,000 from the general fund fund balance for the purpose of installing a solar array. And then to have the fire chief work with the supervisor to develop the bid specifications that are then approved by the township board. So that's our purchasing policy procedure. So the board will see this two more times. The fire chief will work, develop bid specs, bring them back. We'll have a competitive bid process and then the final contract will come to board.
How long does that usually take? It is something we do a lot, so.
It's not something I've done with, with the township yet. Any big purchases I've done have always been state bid pricing.
Obviously, we haven't done a lot of it yet.
When we did this with our IT, I think, I think I'd be happy, I'm sure David has experience, I have experience. We can snap something together pretty quickly.
Yeah, I am not experienced, so I'll give you some guidance here. But I've got all the data to work with wherever I need to to get it done.
Trustee Corto, I see your hand raised.
Chief, but I know you probably run a lot of numbers on this. I'm curious if you've looked at what the payback is in terms of this installation versus how, how quickly will it pay back with the savings on annual or monthly electric payments?
Yeah, so my, I, I had to estimate, estimate because I didn't have direct access to transmission charges for commercial buildings and such. But I estimate within six years, we'll have a payback.
Great. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions from members of the board? Trustee Vogel?
I just want to express very strong support for this. The payback is a great question and a great answer. I'm just thinking about how to ensure you're getting really good technical advice on this. There's questions around inverters and warranty and battery packs and the pros and cons of that, et cetera. Are you feeling like you've got the right kind of technical expert input for this? And how can we help with that?
So I think so. I was guided in this process, again, by, by Jan Culbertson.
Oh, then, then you're there. Yeah, then you're there. If you've got Jan thinking about this with you, you're rock solid.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Jerome?
Just a question. So have you had the, oh, sorry. Yeah. Can you everyone hear me? Sorry. Have you had the conversation with regards to the expansion of the EV fleet and the addition of the six panels? If indeed there is a timeline for the DTE and the ability to sell back, have you investigated the purchase of the six panels upfront in the capacity to address the EV charged vehicles now versus waiting and then having it fall and not be grandfathered in to the potential to sell back to DTE and the transmission of that solar power?
Yes. So my understanding from the conversation with the vendor I spoke to was that you can't create, so if we were to do, add the panels to it, we would essentially be creating more electricity than we consume. And that's not allowable by the current rules. So we'd have to have the actual need for the electricity before we can expand the system.
Are there additional comments or questions from the members of the board? So just before we open this up for members from the public, I'd like to read the model motion to appropriate $50,000 from the general fund balance. Take this off for a second. To 101-265-975, Buildings and Grounds, Buildings and Improvements, for the purpose of installing a solar array to provide energy for the fire station building and to direct the fire chief to develop bid specifications for approval by the board. Is someone ready to move the model motion? I see a hand raised by Trustee Jerome.
Just a note, Will, on the agenda, unless it was changed, maybe I don't have it, it's discussion only.
Oh.
So I just want, you, you might want to clarify that. Because discussion only, traditionally, we're not able to take actions on the same order.
Oh. I'm sorry. That was my error.
I'm still in favor of it, but according to our normal procedure, as discussion only, it would preclude it.
That's, that's true. Andy had drafted it first as discussion only and then he and I talked more about it and realized there's these multiple steps. So I apologize to you, Chief, for not changing that designation to possible action. We should have changed that at the top of the agenda.
I don't think anyone noticed it until this moment. So we could do it by, you know, by acclamation if everyone on the board is amenable. Can't we?
I'm amenable and you just have to add the ability for public comment. There's no public comment on the discussion only.
Right. We, we would, I was intending to open it up for public comment after.
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Okay. Well, one suggestion is, being that this is, if we keep it as discussion only, is that, you know, we don't have to appropriate the $50,000 from the general fund balance right now. But if we're all comfortable with that idea and we can just simply ask that our chief work to develop the bid specifications and come back. So I don't think that this is, I think this step could happen when we have the bid specifications as well.
Well, that slowed things up for you, Andy, or you could proceed?
No, I think we can move it. And, you know, part of this was, not that I needed to, but I kind of wanted to gauge the board's feel on this.
I think we've got a good sense of this word from the board. All right. Well, in that case, then maybe the simplest thing to do is to, is to move on to the next agenda item. You've, you've got your straw poll, I would say. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there another comment? I saw Ian raised there.
We just suggested if there's, unless there's any objection by Mr. Fink, if we could move this forward. I hate to delay this and add this on another meeting. We, we tend to have too much as it is anyways. We have consensus this evening amongst the board. We have the opportunity to poll the public. And unless we, it's prohibited by anything that Mr. Fink might suggest, I would say we just do it, do it.
And there is no delay to the project. We're not adding another meeting, just so Alec understands.
It, it's not prohibited. You, you could amend the agenda and take it up. But I, I don't think that it's going by, you have your agenda, you don't know who would have been online to comment had they thought you were going to take action. So you, you could address it, but I think the chief and the clerk have made a point that there's, it's not going to slow things down. And it's, it's also not like if the board approved it tonight and changed its mind later, that it wouldn't just not approve the, the bid. So I, I don't think it's necessary, but it's not prohibited.
All good. It's rock. Discussion only.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Board.
That brings us to item I3, which is Zeb Road Pathway Phase 3 Construction Engineering Increase for OHM. So this is a change order. And I don't know if Matt is here.
Yeah.
Oh, he is. Okay. Then we'll, let's have, turn to Matt Parks to explain.
Hey, everybody. I'll, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll be quick since it's pretty late, but just kind of an overview. Zeb 3, hopefully you've all seen it, walked it. I know we provided some drone footage, but highly successful project, basically extending that bike path from Dexterian Arbor north to the Kanga's property, to the north side of that. Overall, the board approved a construction budget of about $660,000 with a $33,000 contingency. Happy to report we used $0 of that contingency and in fact, we came in under a contract to the tune of about $49,000. So that consent agenda item that you approved for the change order, actually was a negative. So that's, that's why it was on the consent. So kudos to the contractor, our team, all the people on tap that gave their feedback. So with that though, we ran into additional efforts on our end. Some property disputes with some residents and things that had to be worked out in the field, some redesign to set ourselves up for success for Phase 4, which I'm happy to report is going out for bid next week. And I outlined a couple of other bullet points in our memo dated December 10th. So with that, we're looking for a small amendment to our services just to catch us up. We proceeded with those extra efforts just to help keep the job moving, stay on time, stay on task. And the only thing we really have to do on this job is release the retainage that we're going to hold over the winter just to make sure the grass grows in the way we want it to. But overall, very, very happy with this phase. Looking forward to Phase 4. And I appreciate your consideration for, like I said, the small amendment to help get us whole on the job for the effort that we put in.
Thanks, Matt. I'll, I'll just read the motion so that everyone has it. It's that the board amend the Zeb Road Pathway Phase 3 project budget to increase construction engineering services by $11,700 to compensate OHM for work completed beyond the original scope.
Small, small addition to that?
Um, sure.
Payable from 208-753-821.
208-753-
53821. And just a point of information, Matt, and I'm sure you're going to mention this. The initial contract was $129,900. So it's an increase of $11,700 over that.
Thank you.
Okay, with that amendment payable from 208-753-821, is someone prepared to make that motion? Trustee Jerome?
I'll make the motion, but I'd also make like one comment. All change orders should be written and agreed to by both parties prior to commencement. That's a good standard for all projects. I understand and I'm not, this is not condemning OHM. And I know there was a timeliness factor for that. But I'm just saying in general, we should be looking at that as the approach for change orders. They, that you should not be coming back for asking for payment for change orders that have not been in writing and accepted by both parties prior to the commencement of that activity. Just as a note, but I will support this motion.
So we have moved by Jerome. Do we have a support? Trustee Vogel? Are you supporting?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So moved by Jerome, support by Vogel. Are there further comments or questions from members of the Board of Trustees? Are there comments from members of the public?
If so, please raise your Zoom hand. There are no real hands left in the room. No Zoom hands. Will?
In that case.
No real hands.
In that case, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel? Noel?
Yes. Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, guys.
That brings us to one of the additions to the new business. That's I4. If this is the budget amendments, these are brought to the meeting by the clerk. So I will turn it over to you to introduce them.
Great. Thank you, Will. So these are the routine budget amendments, the cleanup amendments that we've talked about. And, and I think there's been some misunderstanding about what these are. And so I want to explain. We talked at the beginning of this budget year about improving our practice around when we do budget amendments. As we know, the legislative body of the local union shall amend the General Appropriations Act, that's our budget, as soon as it becomes apparent that a deviation from the original budget is necessary and that the amount of that deviation can be determined. So we're trying to, we, we had discussed, should these be quarterly budget amendments? How should we do these? We couldn't get consensus. And now with Rebecca's extraordinary efforts of catching up because our books hadn't been reconciled, as you know, through October until a month ago. And we have the financial reports. And so a regular practice that I brought to the board a month ago is to introduce the financial reports along with the cleanup budget amendments. And I'm going to explain what I mean by that. Because any budget amendments that have been clearly made as budget amendments by the board are already entered into the general ledger. So that's why when you look at your revenue and expenditures reports and you see the original budget and then the amended budget, it has all the additional revenue we've budgeted, additional expenditures we've budgeted. But there are some of these cleanup budget amendments that for various reasons, we've taken actions to spend money without budgeting it. We don't want to do that. Now, over the next few months, as we round out this fiscal year, I'll probably have a few of these each month. A month ago, when I brought the first cleanup budget amendment, the capital fund budget amendment for Fund 431, and I think it was another late night that the chief was here, and here he is again, waiting for it. And we discussed it and the board requested that I separate them from the financial report so that we would do these cleanup budget amendments one meeting and financial reports the next meeting. So that's why I submitted it for the consent agenda to align with the payment of the bills. We have two bills, one sizable one for Parkland Plaza that's tied to this budget amendment. one for Parkland Plaza that's tied to this budget amendment. So I'd like to share with you what these budget amendments are. If you'd be so kind to open up to the resolution, each of these paragraphs should be familiar to you. And and I can, you know, format these differently, look at these, you know, change the process. But I maintain these are necessary and reasonable, and I hope as we get practice, will become fairly routine. So the first one is the Fire Station Capital Project Fund 431. Again, it's here. Now, what does the Fire Station Capital Project Revenue and Expenditure Report look like? You got it all a month ago, but you may not have tuned in. The budget column is zero. The expenditure column is 1.2 million. Not okay. We all agree. So what this does is moves the money where it should have been at the beginning of this fiscal year. Now, rewind to the prior board. We started this project without a budget. We appropriated money without a budget, and then necessarily, we needed to create the new capital fund, which is required by the law, the chart of accounts. We did that. The there was some kind of a kerfuffle around creating that new fund, and we decided at the time of adopting the budget on March 23 that, hey, it's okay. We'll just do a quick budget amendment for this fire capital fund 431. It'll be a no brainer. So that no brainer has been sitting with us since the summer. Us, me, Will, Donna, our staff. And I brought it as the first cleanup budget amendment a month ago. So what this says, and this is the most complicated one, what's the biggest dollar amount? It says there's a column that says prior budget, a column that says proposed budget, and a third column that puts together that says new budget, which is the sum. The prior budget shows the ending fund balance of 827,000. And then it shows the increase of the revenues of the 1.5. So that's the loan from the general fund. So right now, if you look at our revenue and expenditures, looks like we have about 1.5 million in the wrong place. Okay, so that that's the first one. And it's a cleanup, because we've already authorized all of this. We've authorized each of these steps time and time again, but we never did a budget amendment. We never put it in the budget. A second kind of quirky one, which was a great gift to the township, and thanks to Jane and Will for their work on it, was this 135,000 from University of Michigan. In 2017, they gave us a maintenance and guarantee bond for the construction of the West Ann Arbor Health Center. 2017. And we, of course, so as not to get a major audit finding, had to get a written agreement from U of M to us saying, yes, township, we're not coming back for the money. You can have it. Please spend it on the Parkland Plaza sidewalk. And when these conditions are met, meaning it's all built, it can be released. That just happened last month. The you know, or maybe a little bit before that, Jane, when it was all done. We've got this $300,000 bill to Ponsen in our payment of the bills tonight. But this is some of the money to be budgeted in that revenue. So all this would do, and you can look at appendix fee there, little little simpler than the fire one, is is it shows in Fund 208 that we're budgeting in the revenue for the Parkland Plaza from contributions from partners to appropriate the 135 in revenue for the Parkland Plaza project per the U of M agreement, and that we're going to spend it on the same thing. Okay. So Jackie, I remember during the budget adoption process, and I brought up the 135,000, which we had, you know, talked at length about, you know, internally with our attorney and things. And Jackie said to me, you know, hey, so it'll be like, no big deal. Later on in the year, we'll just do a quick budget amendment and put this in as revenue. And I'm sorry, Jackie, I was I was I was recalling, I was trying to put words in your mouth. Maybe it was somebody else. But it was not not it's a routine budget amendment. And that's that's what this is. The third one is something where we've done this before, and there's a few more like this, where our motion approves, remember with the culverts, and Will was able to get the DDA to commit to pay for the culverts, so we wouldn't have to pull it out of the general fund?
Yes.
So we approved the agreement per the September 14 motion, but we never actually did the budget amendment for it. And so what this budget amendment does, the attachments, see, it budgets in the revenue, the contributions from the DDA, and it budgets the expenditures for that purpose in the future. So I wanted to describe those because we're going to have, you know, I think that there's probably three to six more of these based on some of these imperfect motions that we've written. And and it's a it's a habit we'll get into. You know, probably going forward, David will recommend, you know, kind of a budget policy for us, or or more policies or procedures around maybe doing it quarterly or something. But these are the cleanup amendments, so that in two in in two weeks, when you get the financial reports, they're more real and they're more up to date. Anyways, that that's what these are.
Trustee Vogel?
Thank you. It's very helpful to understand all that. I appreciate the clarity with which you described all that. I have one question.
Sure.
Relative and Jessica, you know, this has been a concern, because I just haven't been able to see it in the numbers, and maybe they're there. But as you, as I think you know, there in all of us, there were four funding partners for Parkland Plaza.
Right.
And I I am just looking for confidence that the revenue from all four of those partners is reflected in the Parkland Plaza category of the Park and Pathway, the Pathway Budget 208. It's U of M, it's Lake Stone, it's it's the senior development, and it's the DDA. All of that money, when it comes together, is a is like a 75% 70 75% chunk of the overall bill. And I'm just looking for evidence that that money is in the right place.
Exactly. And and that's why we implemented the project accounting. So I was just looking at this this morning. And the one piece I want to verify is the senior development piece. But the other three sources with this amendment, the 135 gets gets into the right place.
The Lake Stone money is in?
Yeah. Yeah. And I'll run that-
The DDA money is in, and in this in this right bucket.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. Yeah. The 208 for the Parkland Plaza.
Then the senior housing will have a notable delay to it, because it's going to probably move at a pace with that project, and that project's not moving with any notable pace.
Gotcha. So Jane, that that's something where it'd be more of a question of of budget policy for the board of when do we budget money as revenue? You know, do do we think it's going to come in by April 1 or not?
Right.
It's in there.
So just just going forward, both Pathway, Tap Pathways in particular, have been very successful in these outside funding sources.
Yeah.
And Parks and will have similar success over time. So we've got to really, exactly as you say, find ways to recognize and get that revenue bin budgeted and bin in the right place.
Exactly.
Is someone prepared to make the model motion for the approval of the budget amendments resolution? Moved by Palmer?
I'll support.
Support by Noel?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jackie has her hand up.
And I see a hand up. Jackie, excuse me, trustee Corto?
Thank you. I I actually just had a question. I mean, I understand the need to to do these amendments, and we'll have to come up with a process. I actually have two questions. One is for Mr. Rowley, if he could describe for us what he considers best manage best practices on this. But the other is, I I'm still not clear on why if the former board had allocated or had decided where these funds should come from as the final decision, how we said that Woodhill did not incorporate the fire department into the budget that we agreed to in March. I'm I'm just still trying to
Sure.
Trying to figure out the process.
I'll I'll answer that second question first, and then kick it to you for
Yeah, please, please.
So the the history is, and and again, we're always growing and improving. I I I don't know how we, for example, when we did the township addition here, 2017, I don't think we set up a capital fund for it as as we're supposed to. So there was a plan, a bid, there were there was money paid, but it wasn't set up in the proper capital fund as required by Treasury. And that's been, you know, something I've been trying to do is get us, you know, kind of dotting our i's and crossing our t's more. So that's one piece of it, Jackie, is we created the Fund 431. Now, the board, I know it's hard to believe, but the fire station was not in the budget when we started that fiscal year. We had John Achesco as interim fire chief. There was a $70,000 capital improvements budget planned for the fire station. Our 1.35 SAD was estimated to generate $200,000 a year for capital. However, Jack Knowles had a lot of interest and passion for moving it forward. And so in about May, it started getting moved forward. There were not budget amendments done. There was not a capital fund created. And so the year ended with all of these authorizations, contracts, but not the budget amendment. When we brought in Woodhill, amongst other things, tried to get us more in line with some of the chart of accounts of required capital fund, we had a bit of a kerfuffle between, you know, consultant and staff and different opinions. And it was honestly just too much to add to the budget. I think I recall the chief saying, hey, this is my operations budget. You're going to get my capital budget on the station later. I thought later was going to be in a month or two. Here we are in December, but we're doing it. So, you know, again, that's why the CIP is so important, and and why having the department heads leading these capital improvements is so important. And I'll kick it to David for better practices in the future.
Basically, the conversations that I've had is that we need we do what we need to do to amend the budget and get through this this cycle and get through this fiscal year. And we'll be developing a proposal for the board's consideration on best practices going forward. In general terms, you need a a public hearing, you need a you need a draft budget, you need a public hearing on the draft budget, and it's properly vetted so that there's there's input from the various departments. This proposal will have some depth to it and some some examples to it. And basically, the the recommendation is that each department is asked for a budget request, budget request form. What exactly is the departments, the various departments looking to accomplish in the next fiscal year? And then there's an analysis of that with with staff, and then the the whole budget process is put into place. As as it's very correct that the budget is a projection, it's a working document, there will be the opportunity to amend. Traditionally, there's a couple of different models. The annual amendments that I've told have been done here is the extreme minority opinion, if you will, that that's done the least. What is done, there are some jurisdictions that will amend monthly. That seems to be a little bit excessive. Generally, most jurisdictions will 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 adopt one of two models. They'll either do it on a semi annual basis or a quarterly basis. So many jurisdictions will amend the budget once in July to coincide with the summer tax collection and the summer reconciliation. They will also amend it in December to do the same the same thing for the same reason, because there's two tax collections. You can also do it on a quarterly basis. In addition to that, there should be a capital improvement plan, capital improvement budget that is done on a five year cycle, but is also reviewed and amended annually as well. So all of that is is a plan that's in the works. There are best best practices that are out there. And so what I want to learn is as much about how SIO has done things and take those best practices and see what pieces of them actually still work here. And then, at the same time, implement and modify a proposal for the board to consider and adopt a budget policy going forward. The the goal is, at least in my mind, to have something for the net for the next fiscal year. We might not be able to, it's going to depend a lot on on how the next three months go to finish everything up. But we'll do our best to see if we can get it in the 2022 fiscal year. If not, then definitely, there'll be some interim suggestions, and maybe perhaps we do a full implementation the 2023 fiscal year. But that's where we're that's the plan right now, at least in my opinion, to to start laying the groundwork and then working with staff and and all departments to see what makes sense.
Before we get into further discussion about sort of where we might go in the future, I'd like to be mindful of the fact that it's already after 11 o'clock, and we have several items left on the agenda. So I would like to move this along. Are there further comments from people who haven't already spoken among the Board of Trustees? Are there members of the public who would like to comment on this item before we call a roll?
If so, please raise your Zoom hand. Yes, Alice Owens.
Thank you. I certainly spent a lot of time looking at the budget. And the story that was just recounted as far as how we got where we are with this budget, it it just doesn't comport with what I understand from having spoken with a number of the folks involved in it. And I'm disturbed that there's this notion that the way the budgets were done in the past was wrong. It wasn't best practices. It had, you know, all these, you know, attendant shortcomings to it, when in fact, the budgets before were actually very well done and and resulted in in typically minimal, you know, yearly reconciliation amendments. So that's the first thing. The second is to make it sound as though Woodhill only came in to do the budget. Woodhill had been, I thought, engaged, what, about in June? So they certainly were around. And again, the the last thing I would say is that this goes along with the discussion about the accounting assistant, which is that, you know, there was always the intention to provide the proper staff support to various of these areas. And that included Sandy Egler as budget director, because Will Hathaway as the supervisor that you as the board on August 17 indicated he would be responsible for the budget, needs some support in that area. And so, you know, for us to be dealing with this at 11:20, you know, Sandy has gone home, driven back to Chelsea.
Pretty sad.
And it it just seems, I I would say, really, it it was buried. It wasn't even an actual amendment item. You know, I had to go searching for the for the documents. What if Will Hathaway had missed 1.2 million of a budget? I don't think that certain concerned citizens would be calling it a kerfuffle. We have a really competent person in Sandy Egler. She's been sidelined these last two years. I suggest we go back to using her to her full extent. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Next up is Kathleen Brand. Kathleen? Kathleen Brandt.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
Here you are.
Yep, I wanted to address the comments from Attorney Owings. She just did a litany of hearsay of what happened sometime in the past. I don't know that I trust or believe that is factual, but is clearly hearsay. What we have now is a process and people that are trying very hard to get this process in place, as was just explained by Mr. Rowley. This has been a constant complaint from Attorney Owings. And I don't, she cites nothing factual. It's all the way she remembers it. And I just don't believe it. You know, it's not helping. She's been complaining about this for about nine months now. And somehow she always attributes blame to the clerk, who is not the entire board. She just told you the entire board voted on the fire station renovation. So let's stop assigning blame when a entire board voted for this. So I don't buy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. And I would also remind members of the public, you know, though you may reference other members of the public, please continue to direct your comments to the board. Go.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak?
No, there were.
Okay. In that case, I would call a roll on the motion to approve the resolution.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
No.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
No.
Motion passes 5 to 2.
Next item is G1, payment of the bills. This is ordinarily an item on the consent agenda. I'm not exactly sure why it came off the consent agenda.
Sure, I took it off the consent agenda because I didn't want to get us into deficit spending with the Parkland Plaza and fire station anymore. And so with the budget amendments that just passed, I would offer a motion to approve the payment of the claims as presented and to accept the previous check run.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Support moved by Flintoff, support by Noel to approve the payment of the bills. Is there further discussion? Seeing none from the Board of Trustees. Are there members of the public who would like to comment before we call a roll?
No.
No, okay. In that case, please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Thank you. Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
That brings us to G8. This is the land preservation, Loveland property purchase. The model motion is that the board approves an amount, excuse me. The board approves an amount not to exceed 307,000 of township land preservation millage funds to be expended for the fee simple purchase of approximately 20.76 acres of property owned by Virginia Loveland as described on the attached 102221 memorandum from the Land Preservation Commission, that up to $5,000 in LPC millage funds be expended for closing costs and that the supervisor be authorized to sign the closing documents. I'll make that motion. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Palmer, so moved by Hathaway, support by Palmer. Is there comment from members of the Board of Trustees? Trustee Corto.
I'm not sure that Mr. Lonik is still present, but as he pointed out in his documents, this was considered that it's a highly valuable property for getting better access to another property since it's immediately adjacent to Mercer Woods. And it also ranked highly in and of itself, a really nice wood mature oak forest and wetland complex. So LPC was enthusiastic about this.
I believe Barry's in the audience. Just, I think I saw it.
Yep, I just brought him in. Here he is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there questions for Barry, since he's rejoined us remotely? I don't see any questions for Barry. Are there further comments before we call, oh, this is an action item now, sorry, before we open it up to members of the public? In that case, are there members of the public participating remotely who would like to comment on the land preservation Loveland property purchase?
Please raise your Zoom hand. I see none.
In that case, please call the roll on the motion.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Brings us to item G9. Now, this is the Rens 9.5 acre future fire station and water utility facility purchase agreement. And this is, I think, as Barry explained very clearly earlier in the evening, at a reduced cost from what the board had already approved. We, I think, approved up to $330,000 for this purchase. So this is a significant savings over what we had projected we might have to pay. It's only $225,000. Please excuse the error of omitting the K after the 225. It's not that big of a deal. But the model motion is accurate. And that is that the board approved the attached purchase agreement in the amount of $225,000 for the 9.5 acre parcel at the north end of the Rens property. So I'll make that motion.
Could I, sorry, I just wanted to, I took it off consent to just add one thing to the motion.
Oh, all right, go ahead.
If I could suggest, to the north end of the Rens property from Fund 10190971. So it is a general fund expenditure, to be clear. Because while we anticipate it will be assigned to fire or water, we're not certain yet.
Okay, so with that amendment from 10190971, I'll make that motion. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Flintoff, so moved by Hathaway, support by Flintoff. Is there further comment by members of the Board of Trustees? Are there members of the public participating remotely who would like to comment on this purchase?
Yes, I see one hand.
Expenditure, does it require an amendment, a budget amendment?
May I respond to that? This has been budgeted. So this is something, we budgeted $300,000 for this purpose a couple of months ago. It shows up in the revenue and expenditure report as revenue. And that's why we're expending it from the account that we budgeted it in. So we did this process correctly.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any other comments from members of the public? In that case, please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right, this brings us to approval of the minutes. And the first item is J1, which would be approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of November 9, 2021. And for this set of minutes, draft minutes, I circulated to the board my recommended amendments to the minutes. I see a hand raised, trustee Corto.
I'm sorry, but did we just skip over item G10? Or did that get assigned to a different part of the agenda?
Item G10 was not moved from the consent agenda. So it was approved when we approved the consent agenda.
Thank you. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Thanks for asking. So as I was saying, I've presented the board, I've circulated to the board the changes that I proposed for the November 9 minutes. And I haven't really heard from a lot of people with any questions or concerns about the changes that I proposed. Trustee Jerome?
I'd make a motion to support the additional material that was provided by the supervisor. I think it only adds to the material previously incorporated and actually had some good additional information with regards to the motion actions of the board. And it's helpful to the public to understand the basis of the VOT meeting and content. So I would make a motion to approve the suggested amendments as proposed by the supervisor in the letter dated X date.
So we have a motion by Jerome. Do we have support? Palmer supports. So we have a motion by Jerome, support by Palmer. Is there further comment?
I would say procedurally, and as we discussed with our attorney and administrator, the amendments need to be read into the record. The amendments need to be made.
I will, if we are ready to proceed, I will read the amendments if that is what is required.
And I have a couple of suggestions here and there. So do you want to take it section by section or page by page?
Well, I was going to read through them. And we have a motion to approve them as a body, as a whole.
There's some factual errors, just one or two. So we had discussed, you know, not wanting to get in the pickle of trying to say, yep, it's all good. And David Rowley had suggested a different process for going through. And I'd recommend we follow that process. It will be efficient if we start it.
Well, I don't, what I don't want to do is have to go through and vote on each of the changes to the minutes.
Sure.
And I think that that is the spirit of trustee Jerome's motion. So what I would suggest is that we read through and if there are
Get as far as we can.
If there are significant disagreements about some portion of the changes, we can try and deal with that. But I think we, you know, if we need to read through it, we need to read through it. But I think we should get on with that.
Go for it.
All right, so.
I had a comment.
Okay.
Discussion comment.
Sure, go ahead.
We just got these yesterday. And I didn't see them yesterday. So I can read through it now, but I didn't see them.
Okay, we can do it now.
All right, so on page 1, Flintoff, so under the adoption of the agenda, the first change would be to change the statement that starts Flintoff and then change it to opposed placement of agenda items H2, H3, H4, and H5 under unfinished business. Flintoff suggested these items be moved to new business. Hathaway disagreed, given that they were previously on the October 26, 2021 agenda. So that would be the, that would be the new replacement language. So it would replace the language that was there before.
I would just suggest the insertion of one word to make it correct on the proposed October 26, 2021 agenda.
That's fine.
Can I make a process observation, please? It sounds like there was a motion on the table to be able to agree to all of these changes, which the supervisor has proposed. The clerk in particular, sounds like she's got some, a change here, a change there. It is 20 minutes to midnight. Is this something we could ask the two of you to go off and agree on so that what comes back is something we can agree to? Do we really, at 20 to 12, we're really going to do this?
It'll be quick. Let's just do it.
I'm sorry, Jane, but I think that this is part of the
Let's do it. It doesn't work well.
I know, it's part of the problem with the amending of minutes. It has to be done this way. And when the minutes are this wordy, it takes more time. So the next change would be on page 2. It's a correction of the spelling of Halasak.
Oh, thank you.
Which is consistently misspelled twice. Then in section, in item F5, I just removed the word recently because it was redundant. On page 3, I deleted the end of that section, that sentence or that statement at the top. It says, "As well as for the board to determine its next steps strategically." Because I don't think that was actually part of what the meeting, that public meeting was meant to do. So I didn't go back and listen to see if that was what was actually said. But I know that the intent is not, that that meeting is not to do that. The unfinished business on page 4, I changed the initial section under H1 to Hathaway explained the challenges in recruiting eligible compensation commission nominees. He said that there is no basis for concerns about the status of the proposed nominees being either former township officials or spouses thereof. And that while he appreciated their willingness to serve, he would not replace eligible nominees with residents who had applied over the past four weeks.
Smalls, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Where are you, Will?
Page 4.
Under H1.
Under unfinished business on page 4.
I would just suggest capitalizing compensation commission.
So there are no changes on page 5. I deleted, on page 6, the third item down starts Hathaway said it is, so I changed this to Hathaway said it is backward to consider a wife as just an extension of a husband. Hathaway emphasized that none of the current nominees are currently township employees, period. I don't know what that other sentence relates to. And I don't, it seems irrelevant to that point anyway. The next item is, I think, this is the hard part of doing it in black and white. I should have printed this out in color. I'm not sure, but I think the next change is the township attorney responded that the commission shall consist of five registered electors of the township. So this is, Flintoff asked the township attorney for clarification on if only the supervisor may make motion on nominees on this issue. I didn't bother to correct that sentence, but
Where are you, Will?
It's on page 6, still on page 6. And then what's added there is the answer from the township attorney. So the township attorney responded that the commission shall consist of five registered electors of the township appointed by the supervisor, subject to confirmation by a majority of the board.
And I'll make it of the board instead of or the board and capitalize commission township supervisor board. Okay?
Sure. It's really good for typing fast.
You struck. Palmer withdrew her support for the motion.
Yes, and Palmer expressed frustration with this kind of board action and said she wants it to stop. That's inserted. Palmer said she would like the item at the top of the agenda saying that she will sit down with the supervisor and clerk to talk to down with the supervisor and clerk to talk together prior to the next meeting. So then that brings us down to the motion passed, which is actually five to one.
Yep.
So earlier on, when we were talking about the kind of OMA corrections, that's an OMA, what I think we would call an OMA correction. The next change is under H2. And this is, in the first paragraph, Hathaway introduced this and subsequent four proposed actions as creating a responsible staffing structure, endorsing the proposed structure as meeting the needs of all three officers, clerk, supervisor, and treasurer, without encroaching on the legal authority of the clerk. So that's the change.
Good. We just capitalized the officers.
In the next, next change is, underneath motion by Hathaway, Flintoff thanked staff members, Sandy Egler, finance director, and Rebecca Ma, how do you say that?
Maude.
Maude, finance manager, for being in attendance. On page seven, down at the bottom, Alice Owings, and this, so this is a significant change to this paraphrase here. Alice Owings highlighted the material nature of the deficits exposed by the audit and is grateful for the extension of time that allowed Sandy to expose them. She noted that the clerk suggested that $40,000 deficit is a footnote, but she disagrees. She complains that the budget currently provided has less information than in previous years. She objected to the use of outside consultants and stated that she has no confidence in this year's budget because of the $780,000 in fire station costs that were omitted, along with other things highlighted in her memo to the board. And then it ends, Owings thanked Sandy Egler for her many years of work.
Some small suggestions there, Will. Alice Owings, to make it align with other public comment, Alice Owings stated that there is, or that there are, excuse me, stated that there is a material nature of the deficits, da-da-da-da-da. And in referring to Sandy, we'll say Sandy Egler noted that the clerk, capital C, next sentence, instead of she complained, we'll say Owings complained, next sentence, instead of she, we'll say Owings complained, or Owings objected.
So the next is Sandy's statement. Sandy Egler, finance director, provided input to the board about her perspective on the proposal. Egler reflected on her first 28 years in the position during which time she created the books of the township and had a flawless audit record. And I guess this would be, Egler noted that initially she thought, I think there's a missing T there, thought working with the clerk would be a positive experience. Instead Egler...
Noted the numerous...
Yeah, maybe that's it. Noted the numerous public occasions that the clerk has criticized the finance staff and proposed a new system, trying to remove responsibilities that were Egler's and farm them out to other people, which has resulted in two years of reportable audit issues. Egler noted the budget that outside consultants prepared is lacking and expressed concern about using budget amendments throughout the year instead of good fiscal projections. Egler answered questions of the board. Egler said that she is supportive of the proposal because it contains all the checks and balances the board is looking for. Egler opposes the clerk's changes in staffing and the use of outside consultants. Township finances since June 2019. And here's your consultants. It seems like there's a missing word, sorry.
Could I give a go at that last sentence?
Sure.
Egler said she opposes the clerk's changes in staffing and the use of outside consultants for township finances since June 2019. And that she is very unhappy working under the supervision of the clerk.
Sure. Then on page eight, I just added Hathaway asked the clerk to call the roll.
And I'll fix the page breaks that are popping up for some people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were really sort of insistent on being there. On page 10, under H4, deleted, Palmer entertained suggestions from Flintoff for motion language, added at the end of that statement, so Palmer stated her intention to move forward with appointment of deputy treasurer, comma, a position which is the sole discretion of the treasurer to fill. And then the next change is Vogel expressed her concern about high cost of proposal as it stands with only the deputy treasurer job duties, comma, and that Sandy Egler has critical skills needed for the budget functions as well. The next change is Sandy Egler's next comment, which was Egler expressed appreciation for the support that was offered tonight, but that has not been her experience over the past two years.
Could we add another that? But that, that has not been her experience?
That has not been her experience.
But said that has not been her experience?
Oh, but said that.
Yeah.
Sure. But said that has not been her experience over the past two years. She noted that the staff inside a township used to be a team, but that has changed.
Could we say she reported that the staff? And then to start the next sentence again, Egler said that over the past two years...
Oh, I put it in the wrong place. Egler said, Egler said that over...
The past two years, the clerk has torn apart the finance department.
So presumably we would make the O and over a lowercase o.
Yep.
The clerk has torn apart the finance department, period. Egler said that the problem with the clerk's supervision was that, was the reason that she approached the treasurer about being appointed to the deputy treasurer position, explaining that the increased number of SADs have expanded the role Jim Murry played in support of the treasurer. Maybe we should change that to, and she explained. This work on SADs will now be hers as deputy treasurer. Egler once again endorsed the overall structure proposed because the current structure has made it nearly impossible to get necessary work completed. Egler reiterated, the budgets are a mess. We need a special meeting to go over all issues with finances. Perhaps we should change the last sentence to, she suggested...
Said the board of trustees needed a special meeting, or suggested the board of trustees had a special meeting. Either way.
She suggested the board have a special meeting to go over all issues with finances. So that's the end of the suggested changes on page 10. Then again, at the top of page 11, I added Hathaway asked the clerk to call the roll. Don't see any changes on page 12. On page 13, under budget amendment for capital fund 431, additional text, Hathaway made the point that his budget amendment was presented without any notice, that this budget amendment was presented without any notice at the last minute, and the finance director had not had the opportunity, had not had opportunity to review.
Could I suggest Hathaway, instead of made the point, Hathaway said that this budget amendment was presented without any notice at the last minute, and the, and I checked, this is what you said, and I think this is important, and the former finance director, now deputy treasurer, had not had opportunity to review.
So it'll be last minute, and the finance director...
Now deputy...
Now deputy treasurer.
The former finance director, now deputy treasurer, had not had opportunity to review.
I missed a word there. The former finance director, now deputy treasurer, had not had the opportunity to review. Hathaway suggested Flintoff present cleanup budget amendments separately from the financial reports on future agendas. Palmer asked if action needed to be taken immediately, and if not, to table. Flintoff stated that she was handing the budget amendment to the supervisor for next steps.
And I would just add the word sarcastically. No, seriously, it was, I went, I went, fine, you do it. Well, it is, I mean, it is true. I typically don't include sarcastic comments, but that was a sarcastic comment, so.
All right. I guess it's hard to tell when you're, you know, watching the video.
Yeah.
So that brings us to page 14, page 15. I think that's it for the changes to, that I had proposed to the November 9th minutes. Are there any other amendments? Are there any other changes? Trustee Corteau?
Sorry, just to be consistent, if we're capitalizing titles on page 13, supervisor should be capitalized in that last budget or amendment part.
Thank you.
Where is that? Oh. Yep. I see what you're talking about.
Got it.
All right, is there further comment, trustee Corteau? No? Okay. Trustee Noel?
Okay. Back to the earlier change you made, it was on page three. It is what I said in the Gellman report. I see a better way of improving that last sentence. What you could do is delete three words, the as well as. Those could be deleted. So it reads, Noel said the township would hold a special meeting for the residents and a meeting for the board to determine its next steps strategically. I mean, it's not for the board. It was and another meeting.
So it was two meetings?
Yeah. It's two meetings, yeah.
Oh, that's why, that's why, that's why it didn't make sense to me when I, when I read the draft minutes.
It's not another board meeting, though. It was another meeting of our subgroup.
Ah, okay.
So we'll do, comma, and another meeting to determine next step strategically?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other comments, quest, I mean, changes to the November 9th minutes? In that case, I would call a roll on the motion by Jerome, supported by Palmer, to approve the changes to the minutes as we have now gone through and...
Is that a friendly amendment?
Yeah, I guess this is a friend, I guess now that I'm saying it, is that a friendly amendment, trustee Jerome? To accept the additional changes?
Yes.
Okay.
And Palmer?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Both mover and the supporter have agreed to that. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
So the next item is approval of the minutes of the special meeting of November 22, 2021. Are there any changes proposed for these draft minutes?
I have one change. On page three, adjournment, I screwed up on the list of who was absent. It was just Corteau. So I'll strike Jerome and Vogel, who were both present.
They were both absent and present?
Right.
Is that the only change?
I've moved to support the model minutes for the special meeting.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Jerome, support by Noel, to approve the minutes of the November 22 meeting as amended. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
The next item is the agenda, the agenda is J3. This is the minutes of the November 23 meeting, and I would make a motion to include these minutes in the project to have transcripts done of minutes, and then brought, and have those, along with the others, brought back to the board for consideration when we have the transcripts ready.
I would ask if we, if, I mean, one, I think we should amend and approve these tonight. This was our most recent meeting, and this is what we're supposed to do at the next meeting. If that's not going to happen, and if the majority of this board is going to table another set of minutes, please do so to a day certain.
Will, what is the rationale for having these particular minutes transcribed?
That sounds like the second item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I just had two items.
Well, so first of all, there's a motion made. Is there support for the motion?
No, not with me.
Well, I understand, I'm asking in general, is there support for the motion that was made to include these in our project of having transcripts for minutes? So we have support. And I guess to answer your question, trustee Noel, the goal of having the transcripts for the various minutes that I outlined in my report earlier this evening is to provide a complete record of those meetings. I can tell you from the amount of work, the amount of time that went into correcting the minutes from November 9th, that it is no small undertaking to correct the minutes for one of these, for meetings where these are the kinds of minutes that are presented. If the minutes were sort of done more tightly, I guess, according to sort of the minimal OMA required components of the motions, who made them, how the vote went, who was present, and so on, that, that would be a much easier task, and something that I think we could do on a regular basis, simply by bringing them to the meeting, the next meeting, and going through at the meeting and making the, whatever the corrections are. When there's so much text, when there's so much sort of effort to represent lengthy statements, then you get into this territory where it's very, very challenging to make corrections to the minutes. I think just the exercise that we just went through, just going through the changes that I proposed to the minutes from November 9th, I think is illustrative of just how challenging that can be. So now we've, we've got that evidence before us, we've got that experience. I think, you know, to launch into, for example, an attempt to correct these November 23 minutes without... minutes without the benefit of looking, you know, double checking and going back to the video to check what people said, and, you know, to fill in the blanks that, you know, for what's missing, I think that would be, you know, in some ways, kind of a guaranteed, you know, sort of flawed process. In order to correct minutes like these, you either need to have a full transcript to accompany them, or you need to, you know, have someone has to spend a lot of time with the video and the accompanying Zoom transcript, which is, you know, we certainly can't use the Zoom transcript, it's, believe me, it's almost comical, but it is a useful reference point. It's just not possible, you, you either do it one way or you do it the other way with these kinds of minutes. And I suggest that rather than anyone spending hours of time trying to fix, you know, these draft minutes, that we use the same approach that we're proposing for the earlier sets of minutes, and use a transcript. Um, trustee Jerome, sorry.
Yeah, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, I, I guess I would just like to comment on the fact that we're talking about, and the board has mentioned many, many times, they have some concerns about errors and omissions in regards to the record and the minutes. There's no way that anyone's going to recall a five-hour meeting in its entirety and all the words said without the availability of video. The video for the 23rd meetings was not presented in a timely fashion where people could sit down and actually go through it. I would recommend, and I've looked at all of the townships and meeting minutes in the lower Michigan area, none, none, this is not a standard format. My suggestion is, and I think this should be for all meetings, is that we have a header that goes on the top of each one of our meetings, and we can discuss this, goes on top of each one of our meeting minutes that says, the regal, the legal record for the Board of Trustees meeting, Board of Trustees meeting, pardon me, it's midnight, held on X date, inclusive of the video recording, the transcript and minutes can be found at an embedded link, whatever that, whatever we name it. The minutes reflect the actions and votes of the board, the video and transcript of the BOT meeting provide the precise wording of all statements of board members and public comment. We talked about this before, I know I have talked about this before, people need to have access to different forms of the meeting. There are people that have different levels of abilities to either visual impairment or any type of other impairment. It is incumbent upon the board to provide all these three forms so that anybody at any time can get the absolute 100% record of our BOT meetings. And I would probably like to see it extended to other things, but that's a different conversation for a different night.
Clerk Flintoff.
Sure, I mean, I would say, reflect again, the amount of time we spend talking about the minutes, I do not believe the minutes are flawed, I do not believe they're perfect, I am open to amendments happening in a public meeting. I would suggest we dig into these, and I would again note that the minutes were being approved until August 17th. And I think a lot of this is about not approving the minutes of August 17th. I have said, we, you know, you know, the last meeting will go out of order, Jim had advised me, do the least worst thing, and so going out of order was the most I could think of, I would like us to go through November 23rd, or if, if somebody, this motion to put it into a project with no date certain is a worse place than I think we've yet been. So I would ask my colleagues, if you're going to go forward with this motion, to please put a date certain.
Will?
Trustee Knoll.
I would also like to get through the November 23rd minutes tonight. This was our most recent meeting. We should remember enough to get through these minutes tonight, we had been doing that routinely in the past. I know we stopped for, in August, but that shouldn't be an impossible task for this board, and in fact, it is what we are supposed to be doing.
I don't, I, trustee Knoll, I don't think that you registered, I, I feel like you didn't hear what I said, you cannot.
Well, I heard what you said.
Well, okay, so you're disagreeing with me, you're thinking, your thought is that we could go through these minutes without the, without the aid of the video, and that we could reach agreement on, on corrections on these minutes that we, that people would be satisfied with.
Yes, and you interrupted me, Will.
I did not realize that I was interrupting you, sorry. Go ahead, finish your, your comment.
We have a responsibility as a board to approve the minutes in a timely manner. This, this is the time to approve the minutes from the last meeting, and at the very least, we should do that tonight. I don't understand your rationale for saying you want to have a transcription for all of these other minutes, but I think it's a waste, I think that you didn't make substantial changes in the content for the two sets of minutes that we just approved, but that's okay. I mean, as I've said before, these minutes are going to be inherently subjective. And I've also said before, I support going to minimalist minutes, that would make things easier for this group, and it may be the best solution, given where we are right now.
All right, I see three hands raised, are you, are you finished, trustee Knoll? All right, I think the first hand up was trustee Corto, then trustee Jerome, then trustee Vogel.
Actually, trustee Jerome had his hand up long before me.
Oh, I didn't see it, sorry.
I just wanted to ask a follow-up question to Kathy, were your minutes 16 pages in length? And did you ever use a transcription service for the minutes?
We had a.
You were clerk?
We had a completely different system, but yes, there was a transcriptionist, but I went through and changed the minutes after they were transcribed. So I changed them, and the board would then go through page by page and approve them. Some changes would be made, but I think it could simplify things for all of us if we talked about going to more minimalist minutes.
Absolutely.
You all agree?
Absolutely.
With exception. But, but the point being is, and I think we're missing the point, whether or not you think that Will's comment or changes were substantive, you can't make those without actually having an ability to ru, I, I cannot remember all of the, every sentence that was spoken at the last meeting. And unfortunately, there's no way to do that unless you have the ability to review the video. I think that we should have, as I stated before, I think for a, the transparency and the benefit of the public and the township, there's a benefit to having the legal record constituted with video recording, the transcript, and the minutes. And then therefore, there's no question, anybody can go, the ability also, the benefit of the transcript is, it's very easy to go in and check and actually ascertain if you're interested in a particular topic or not. They also, they're very helpful in doing that. The Zoom ones do not support that at all.
This might be a point to consult with David Rowley on, because as I recall, the minutes prepared by the clerk are considered to be the legal record of the meeting.
And I actually did, I have consulted with our legal counsel for the township, and you can add addenda to the minutes so that they're inclusive of a transcript and video recording, that they could constitute in totality the legal record of the BOT meeting.
So we would like to change our definition of legal record in CIO Township?
Well, before we get into a sort of a free-form discussion here, I, there were two other hands raised, and I want to honor the, the order of people seeking an opportunity to comment. I believe trustee Corto was next, and then trustee Vogel.
Another consideration, I regrettably missed the last meeting, and these minutes did not arrive until Sunday, I wasn't able to access them until Monday, that's simply not enough turnaround time for someone who's been absent to review a five to seven hour video, which also wasn't easily available, although I appreciate that, that clerk and the office coordinator quickly responded and did make it available when I requested. But just the time at which the minutes arrived makes this particular set of minutes very difficult to review at this point, and, and that's been a fairly consistent challenge.
Trustee Vogel. Hope you're muted.
It is 12:15. Out of respect for our residents who are still with us, out of respect for the staff that is still with us, and out of respect for our new township manager and this board, I am going to suggest we adjourn with two actions. One is to table these minutes for exactly the reasons trustee Corto just said, and two, to ask the administrator for a perspective on trustee Jerome's proposal that the minutes revert to a minimalist style, and they are supported with a transcript and a video recording. You don't, if you have the transcript, you may not need the video, but that idea needs to be more fully vetted, and it is not going to happen at 12:15 at night, and I encourage us to adjourn this meeting after five hours. It's time to be done.
Trustee Vogel, can I make one suggestion? If, if we don't, and it's not on the agenda, so you might not see it, but this is the item that we added, and that is the item that would appropriate funds for the transcription of the minutes. If we don't take that step, then we.
Then let's do it, for the sake of moving forward. Let's get this done and adjourn this meeting.
So is there support for trustee Vogel's motion to table the November 23rd minutes?
Will, I'm sorry, there's already a motion and a second on the table?
Doesn't a motion to table take precedence over a motion that's already been?
Okay.
So there's a motion to table, is there support? Support by Corto, so we have a motion by Vogel, we have support by Corto, please call the roll on the motion to table the November 23rd draft minutes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
No.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Knoll?
No.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two.
So the, the next item is the item that we added when we approved the agenda, and that's, I'll read it, it's the motion that the board authorizes the expenditure of up to $8,500 from the general fund for the transcription of Board of Trustees' meetings on August 17th, 24th, September 14th, 28th, October 12th, 26th, and November 23rd, for the purpose of creating a complete record of these meetings, together with the draft minutes already provided. I would make that motion.
Will, do you have a copy of it?
I, I.
Can you screen share?
I, I sent it to David, but I guess it didn't get circulated out to the board.
I never saw it.
Well, it was just put together today, and so it's, it's a motion that is, you know, you know, democracy in action. So let me clear this.
That was my line.
Oh. Let's see if I can find it. Okay, so here's the, so if I share screen? Can I do that?
Yeah.
See it on here?
Oh, here. And I, yeah.
I don't see an ability to share screen.
Okay. Just, maybe just read it a couple of times, Will, slowly.
All right. Sorry, I'm, I'm having trouble joining as a panelist in sharing my screen, so I'll just read it again, I'll read it slowly. So this is a model motion that the board authorizes the expenditure of up to $8,500 from the general fund for the transcription of Board of Trustees' meetings on August 17th, 24th, September 14th, 28th, October 12th, 26th, and November 23rd, for the purpose of creating a complete record of these meetings, together with the draft minutes already provided. And I actually would like to turn to township administrator to discuss this, because this is a plan that was arrived at in consultation with the township administrator.
And it's not going exactly as he described, but go ahead.
Well, the, the original proposal was, the, the board asked or directed my review and suggestion for possible changes to the minutes that were backlog, I'll use that word, at the December 28th meeting. I took a quick look, I'll, I'll be brief here, I took a quick look and saw that there was something like 45 to 50 hours of video. And it would be, and also, I'm not sure I have the, the legal authority to offer opinion and suggestion on minutes that I'm not a member of the board for. The board can ask, but I'm, respectfully, I'm not sure I had the legal authority anyway. So this was an attempt to resolve the backlog and to provide a, a new starting point going into the future. So the, the proposal is, or the idea is, that all of the minutes for the meetings that were backlogged, and now you have a list of the dates of those meetings, are transcribed. There is a cost to have a court reporter do that, and they will be a certified transcription of what the court reporter is hearing on the, on the video. Then all of these minutes that you're receiving, August 17th, 24th, September, and so forth, will come back to the Board of Trustees' with the recommendation that you review them with the eye towards the Open Meetings Act. So if you see a technical violation of the act, that is what you move to amend, to make them as compliant as possible with the technical interpretation of the Open Meetings Act. Everything else, leave as it, as it is, that, that's the minutes as presented by the clerk at the time. Adopt them with any changes to comply with the Open Meetings Act. Attach to them the actual transcript that the court reporter provides, and as, as we've already discussed as well, as members of the board have mentioned, our proposals are very similar, and I had no knowledge of any comments from the board on this, that you also consider linking, at least for the first five years, the, the video, for the very reason that trustee Jerome, I believe, mentioned, that, that different people learn in different ways. And this way, you have a complete record of the minutes that were presented by the clerk, they were adopted by the board, you have the actual transcription of the hearing from, or I'm sorry, of the meeting. transcription of the hearing from, or I'm sorry, of the meeting from the court reporter, and then you have the actual video. In that way, the public or anyone else can read the minutes, they can watch the video, and they can read the transcript, and then decide for themselves what actually took place at that particular meeting. The, the cost is less than $8,500, but there's a possibility of a little bit. A couple of the meetings were said, or I'm sorry, of the minutes from the court reporter, was that it's going to be arranged from X to Y, so we built in a little bit of a contingency fund, as they not to exceed $8,500 fee. The expectation was to be less than that, but we weren't quite positive of the contingency that might be needed for that. So that is the recommendation at this time to clean up the backlog of, of the minutes from prior meetings. And then we will develop a proposal for board consideration going forward with a little bit, a little different standard for the board to consider as to what the minute format should, should be.
David, part of your proposal, though, was assuming that the board approves all three sets of minutes tonight.
Yes.
Which didn't happen, so we've added one. And also, to a date certain in January.
My recommendation was that the board develop, or I'm sorry, hold a special meeting in January specifically for this purpose, once the transcripts are prepared. So there's two things, two new pieces of information since we had that discussion about the proposed plan. One is, I went through, looked more closely at the backlog of minutes and realized that I, in my opinion, we can, like we did tonight, approve the special meetings, that there's not that much there that, that, you know, was going to require
Except the 17th.
Except the 17th.
Except August 17th.
Except August 17th, yes, that is sort of a special case. But most of the special meetings, there really isn't that much there that requires correcting, I think. And we should be able to quickly look through them to see if there's any sort of OMA quality or category changes that, or amendments that need to be made, and then approve them. And that's what I proposed in my report, but we didn't know that when we talked about this. And so originally, the idea was to get transcripts for all of those meetings. So we actually have trimmed from the original plan five sets of minutes that I think we can approve on the 28th, just as we approved the meetings, the, the minutes for the meeting from November 22nd. Now, that's, I think, a significant difference in the right direction. Now, the other reason that, the reason that I don't think we can set a date certain is that we're still finding out from the court reporter service how long it's going to take them to do this task. We got, you know, a sense of the, how much it will cost, but they don't know until they start doing it, how long it's going to take, and
Is the August 17th transcript done?
It's not done. The original deadline, or the original projection for August 17th and then August 24th was a guesstimate of December 21st. Now, if they meet that, then presumably, we would have the transcripts in hand on the 28th, but we don't know that they're going to meet that. So I, I don't think we can use a date certain with regard to the transcripts until we have more information. Trustee Vogel.
I would like to understand how we are going to bring this to closure. Do we need a motion? Do we need a call to a question? I will acknowledge, I don't understand what the next step needs to be to bring this conversation to a close, given that it is 12:30 in the morning.
I think, did I make the, did I make the motion? If I didn't make the motion, I would make this motion.
Please repeat the motion, so it can be made in second, and we can have one last round of discussion and close the meeting, please.
So the motion is that the board authorizes the expenditure of up to $8,500 from the general fund for the transcription of Board of Trustees' meetings on August 17th, 24th, September 14th, 28th, October 12th, 26th, and November 23rd, for the purpose of creating a complete record of these meetings, together with the draft minutes already provided. And I will make that motion. Is there support? Support from Vogel? Okay, so we, we have a motion by Hathaway, support by Vogel, and we have a suggestion of a friendly amendment being
Offered.
Offered by clerk Flintoff, which is what?
Instead of for the purpose of creating a complete record of the meetings together, to say for the purpose of attaching the transcripts to the draft minutes already provided. Because I think that's how they would be incorporated, as an attachment. Yes.
Yes, attaching.
So, because it also implies that the minutes aren't a complete record. And so attaching the transcripts to the draft minutes already provided.
Attaching the transcripts.
And it's really from the general fund, fund balance, but that's okay. Certainly nothing we've spent money on before.
The transcripts to the draft minutes already provided. Sure, that's a friendly amendment. Is that a friendly amendment to you, trustee Vogel?
Yes.
Okay, so that amendment is accepted. Is there further comment from members of the Board of Trustees?
I'll just say, I'll be opposing this. I appreciate David's idea, but with the way that it has evolved, this seems like a distraction to run up the costs and hem and haw about this task and to continue to not do our job. I would focus everybody on the fact that this all stopped at the August 17th special meeting, and I want nothing more than this board to sit together and amend and approve the minutes together, as we're supposed to do. So please, we need to do our job.
Are there other members of the Board of Trustees who would like to comment before we call the roll? I think that's, I think that's trustee Jerome. It's a little hard to see.
Yes.
Oh.
I, I would just like, and I understand that, and I appreciate that comment. I would also like acknowledgement that all of the trustees have requested a more of a short form, and that the inclusion of 16 pages of comments is also what is creating some of the conditions which are making it very difficult to review, and having six and seven hour meeting, meetings that require that type of review. So I just want to make sure that we're all working, meaning the entire board, to try to create a proper record of BOT proceedings, and that I believe the transcript is a, a tandem to the minutes, which would provide a more thorough record for the public.
I see no other hands raised. Therefore, I would like to call the roll, please.
You want to call public comment?
Oh, yes, I guess we've sort of ventured into an action item. Public comment?
Rob Pattinson, followed by Kathleen Brandt. Rob?
Unfortunately, this is a manufactured problem, that you have manufactured for yourselves. Your job is to amend the minutes. You are proposing to spend thousands of dollars to have somebody else do your job for you. I am so disappointed in you that you want a transcript of, of a bunch of meetings, that it is your responsibility to watch the video if you have to, or to look at your notes, and to identify what you disagree with, and then amend the minutes. That is your job. I am so disappointed in you for wanting to spend our money, thousands of dollars, to do something that is already your job. You have manufactured this all by yourselves, and now you want us to pay for it. It's not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Kathleen Brandt, followed by Pam Boyd. Kathleen?
Hi, Kathleen Brandt. I, I just want to say that I really don't mind staying up for these meetings. I think it's my responsibility to watch this board, especially when they make obvious violations of the Open Meeting Act. You just did it again. You just tabled a set of meetings of August, I'm sorry, November the 23rd. You just broke it again. The residents are paying attention, and we are taking action. You can't just keep doing this and expect that nothing's going to happen. We're watching. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next up is Pam Boyd. Pam?
You know, in other meetings, you all attend, I've watched, and I've, I've timed you, and it, and it takes like, less than 30 seconds to a minute for you to approve other meeting minutes. They're not always short, and certainly, these tend to be longer, but your job is more important, and, and it makes sense that you have longer minutes. And I agree with Rob Pattinson. You are spending $8,500 because you somehow decided not to do your jobs. I can read the transcripts for free, and I do so frequently when I need to transcribe your words for Sciop Community Newsletter. It's easy. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. I see no other interested public.
Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
No.
Corteau?
Yes.
Jerome? Jerome?
Did we lose him?
I'll come back. Noel?
No.
Vogel?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Jerome? I see that Jerome is still on. Just give him a moment. Jerome, we're waiting for your vote on the motion.
Maybe he just doesn't realize he's muted.
Well, we're waiting. Can I ask, Jessica, were the minutes for the last meeting released within the eight days required by OMA?
They were not.
That's the violation. Not that we're not approving them. We need the time to approve them, and I just want that on the public record.
Sure. There are two violations happening. Two violations. Alec is no longer with us. So Alec is absent. The motion passes four to two.
Then that brings us to public comment. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Are there members of the public who would like to comment at this time?
Open public comment, please raise your hand. First up is Harvey Summers. Harvey?
And I still live at 2129 Hill Drive. I've been the secretary of various organizations, and I've taken the more comprehensive types of minutes. So let me just mention that you're talking about, as I understand it, keeping the records of minutes for five years, whether they're transcripts, or videos, or whatever. I have to say that the more elaborate sets of minutes that secretaries are able to do, according to my understanding of the OMA, it's up to the secretary, provide context that the very simplified, they pass this by a vote of such and such, just won't do. And so I have to say that the townships, let's make our life, the trustees, let's make our life easier by keeping the minutes to the minimum, goes against what I've experienced is really important in the job of a secretary. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. Next up is Gillian Carey. Gillian?
Oh, good morning. It's been a long meeting. Few things. This discussion regarding the minutes, and how to do them, and whatnot, that should have been an agenda item on a Rules of Order meeting. This should have been taken care of a long time ago. And Jessica, clerk Jessica, you, you are correct in some ways regarding the August 17. However, I want to point out that September 14th minutes, a meeting, was the first time that a request for tabling by trustee Jacqueline Corteau regarding the previous few, few meetings. And she said that they were not true and complete and whatnot. Tonight, trustee Jerome says that we need a condensed version. So there's a conflict here. The board is not agreeing on a certain way the minutes should be. Clerk Jessica, according to statute, it's your job to transcribe. It is not your job for the board to send them back to you and have you redo them. Actually, that is illegal. Whatever is in the minutes stays in the minutes, even if they're amended. You have to show the original and the corrected. Another thing, it is eight business days after the meeting to which the minutes refer, refer, that a public body, this is a public body, the whole board is the public body, shall make proposed minutes available for public inspection. Public inspection, it doesn't say how that needs to be available. Doesn't, doesn't say it has to be a video, or it has to be mailed out to all residents, or anything like that. It just must be available. It's available at the township. So anybody can ask the township to provide those. The same with the, the videos. They are available. I don't understand this rule that it must be the clerk to do all of this. When was this decided? I don't remember Rules of Order meeting stating these new rules. So it is the board that is responsible, because you are the public body. Another set, two sets of minutes are tabled. This is easy. It's not rocket science. Good night.
Thank you, Gillian. Pam Boyd, followed by Rob Pattinson. Pam?
One last comment. It is 12:41 by my laptop, and I proudly am here because I care about my township. And I will stay up until 12:01, 2:00 in the morning to get the job done. I, I'm not dissuaded by late night hours, because there are a lot of problems with this township. And I'm willing to be here to, to make sure that my voice is heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is Rob Pattinson. Rob?
It's unfortunate that many members of this board have complained ceaselessly about the timely availability of the minutes. And yet, tonight, when the supervisor pops a motion out of nowhere to spend $8,500 that no one has seen, well, not everyone has seen, and, and only heard about at the end of the meeting at 12 something at night, and then you're silent. I think it's unfortunate that the perspective of many on this board is hypocritical, because on one hand, you want the clerk to provide minutes in a timely manner, and on the other hand, you're absolutely silent when the supervisor pops something out of the blue. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. That's all the public comment. Oh, excuse me, there's one more. Alice Owens. Alice?
Thank you. I, I think we're missing something here, which is that it's not simply the quantity that the clerk puts together very long minutes, which, you know, per Gillian Carey's comment, if the clerk doesn't want to do the minutes, I thought that was a statutory duty of hers, but if she doesn't want to and wants to instead delegate that to the board as a whole, then I, I guess that's a possibility. But my concern is that what really was brought home to me, and I did a memo on it, was that the August 17th minutes just simply didn't reflect what happened at that meeting. What happened at that meeting is I was accused of nefarious acts, and, and, you know, is I was accused of nefarious acts, and, you know, I could go into a lot more detail of the accusations that were made. So it's not simply the length, it's actually the quality of what was said, what wasn't said, what was sanitized out, voices that were sanitized out, in a way that other voices weren't. So it really is a matter of qualitative and not simply quantitative. And I think that if they were, as long as they are, but everybody's voice was being correctly heard, and claims of, you know, the original claims of Open Meetings Act violations and things hadn't been sanitized out, that that may be something that, you know, was more palatable to people. It's just the nature of really highly sanitized minutes that give a misimpression because then they don't stand as an accurate reflection of the minutes, excuse me, of the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Next up is Kathleen Brandt. Kathleen?
Yes, Kathleen. I just want to correct, make a correction. The previous commenter just attributed something incorrectly to Gillian. Gillian did not say if the clerk doesn't want to do this. That was just, she never said that. She shouldn't be putting words in people's mouths. It's, I don't know, it's late. There was something else I wanted to say, but I'm now frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Okay, I see no other comment. I see Gillian has her hand up again, but you've already spoken once, Gillian. Thank you, everybody. Will?
Is there a motion to adjourn? No one wants to adjourn this meeting? I see a motion to adjourn from trustee Vogel. Is there support for a motion to adjourn? Support from trustee Noel. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
I may have lost Jacqueline.
Courtois? Absent. Jerome? Absent. Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Meeting adjourned at 12:47. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good morning.
Yeah, right.